Okay, the Dayton Conservation Commission will come to order. The meeting's starting at 7:00 PM in the Old Town Hall at 1111 Somerset Avenue. This meeting is video and audio recorded for the cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. Would everyone stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice
The very first item here I have is Chairman's address. I have mentioned several times about the chestnut trees around Town Hall, the American chestnut trees that we're trying to reestablish and want the public to know that over 200 nuts have been planted and are now in greenhouse protection and we'll see how they come along for spring or summer planting. Our next item on the agenda is a request by Robert Brimmer interested in volunteering for the Dayton Conservation Commission. Bob, I know you're here. Do you wish to say anything on your behalf on, I know that you've been involved in conservation for some time now and you want to help the Commission out in its business? Can I say it all for you?
I'll do the best I can. Like I've been telling everybody, I have limited knowledge, but I'll learn as fast as I can.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or do we, is there a motion to accept Bob as an associate member to the Commission?
I make a motion to accept Bob Brimmer as an alternate on the conservation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Your name will now be submitted to the selectmen for the actual appointment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, we have minutes from three previous meetings that must be approved. I will do each date separately. I know we've all had them to review. Let's start with December 19. Is there a motion to either amend or to accept the minutes on that date?
Motion to accept minutes from 12/19/2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes from January 3rd. Is there a motion to accept or amend?
Motion to accept January 3rd, 2024 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, January 18th, motion to amend or accept?
Motion to accept minutes from January 18th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we have our Review Discuss Act Public Hearing Notice of Intent from DI Trust III Forest Hills Comprehensive Conservation Subdivision seeking to construct 135 single-family homes and 13,137 linear feet of associated roadway off Forest Street. A portion of this project falls in the jurisdictional wetland area DEP file number SE17443. At our previous meeting, this hearing had been closed. Today's meeting is for the Commission and only the Commission and its agents to discuss the information at hand to vote on the application by DI Trust. First, I would like to ask Jonathan to come forward. He is, he is our speaker. He's not going to be entering any new information and he is going to give a review to the Commission about what they, what their findings. And again, there is no new information here. This is just a review of past information.
Good evening, members of the Commission. For the record, Jonathan Nero, Senior Project Scientist with Beta Group. So as Jim had mentioned previously, I was here retained by the Dayton Conservation Commission as a peer review consultant funded by the applicant through a 53G account. Since the issuance of our latest letter on November 8th of 2023 and the following public hearing, I am no longer serving in that role as funded by the applicant. The Commission is elected using their own funds to continue to retain the services of Beta Group to provide technical assistance throughout the Commission's deliberation. Part of this was a request to draft a set of orders of conditions using the information and only the information that was discussed, submitted and reviewed during the public hearing process for this project. These draft orders of conditions cover all possible outcomes, potential approvals, denials under both the Act and the Bylaw. It is important to note that these are simply draft decisions for the Commission to consider and to assist them in their discussions as they deliberate. Ultimately, the decisions rendered tonight will be of the Commission and the Commission alone, and they can either choose to use some, all, or none of the draft information that was provided to them. So the draft order of conditions, as I mentioned, for both approvals and denials, the Commission has several options on, you know, either blanket approvals under both the Act and the Bylaw, denying under both the Act and the Bylaw, or having a denial and approval, one of each. So generally, both the approval documents set forward findings that were discussed during the public hearings and based on information that was submitted during the public hearing process, what the approvals essentially allow is the Commission can, could elect to approve the project under both or either the Act and the Bylaw if the Commission so chooses to make a finding that the project adequately protects the interests of both or either the Act and the Bylaw with special conditions that would ensure that both or either of those regulatory provisions are adhered to. These recommended conditions that would be included in an approval under the Act or the Bylaw range from requiring an applicant-funded environmental monitor, requiring phasing of the stabilization of the site with frequent check-ins from town staff, pre-construction meeting to ensure that all documents are submitted, that are, all documents that are required to be submitted are submitted before construction, and demarcating the limits of work for future perpetual protection at the site. Specifically for the Bylaw, if the Commission elected to approve the project under the Dayton Wetlands Protection Bylaw, they could consider conditions to support the provisions of the Bylaw, including a requirement for the applicant to certify the onsite vernal pool using natural heritage and endangered species-approved methods and submitting a requirement to, for the applicant to submit standalone notices of intent in the future for any lots within the jurisdiction of the Dayton Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Again, draft denials were also provided for both the Act and the Bylaw. These draft denials, again, based on proceedings during the public hearing process, were very similar for both the Act and the Bylaw draft denials. Those include issues discussed at length by the Commission, including what the Commission could find as insufficient setback of stormwater basins to wetland resource areas, as well as what the Commission could find as insufficient information provided by the applicant with regards to alternatives of the stormwater management system design in order to provide greater treatment than what has been provided, given the site's location adjacent to a critical area associated with Sunken Brook, which is tributary to a public water supply. The basis of the Bylaw denial could be found to be the same with regards to stormwater management, but also including the applicant not providing sufficient information on alternatives to better protect the centrally located onsite vernal pool and not providing alternative designs that alter the layout of the project within jurisdictional areas to better support that vernal pool and its wildlife habitat functions and all other functions and values under the Bylaw. So with that, my role here tonight, as requested by the Commission, is just to answer any procedural questions, ensure that any votes are conducted properly, and to answer any other questions that have to do with information that has already been reviewed and submitted. Again, I just want to reiterate, these draft order conditions are for the Commission to use in their deliberation as tools, and the Commission can elect to issue decisions tonight under the Act and the Bylaw that borrow from these if they agree, or to implement additional conditions or bases of denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nero. Okay, I would like to open it up to discussion. Let's deal with the Wetland Protection Act first. What questions you might have or what have you thought of to, to consider either an approval or a denial under the Wetland Protection Act?
Under the Wetland Protection Act, some of the concerns that I had that remained outstanding since the previous meeting were the location of the stormwater basin and the measurement where the applicant has chosen to measure the basin from. I have concerns about that, given the critical resource area that it's adjacent to. I also have concerns that there was no alternatives analysis submitted regarding the, the highest attainable level of stormwater treatment, and those were two major concerns that I had under the Wetland Protection Act. I also had concerns, concerns under the local Bylaw, which I can hold till later if you'd like.
Yes, I would like that, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that encapsulates my outstanding concerns on the Wetland Protection Act.
You have, now, do you want Jonathan to respond to any of those or?
If you would, would you elaborate a little bit on those and, and either let me know if my concerns are well-founded or insubstantial?
No, yeah, I think they're substantiated, you know, based on guidance and regulatory provisions put out by, oh, sorry.
I would agree they are founded based on guidance and provisions from Mass DEP. So with the issue they are referencing regarding the stormwater basin setback, that was discussed in our comment letter and at the public hearings before the hearing was closed, essentially that the applicant, or sorry, to back up, Mass DEP does not specify at what point to measure basins and their setbacks from wetlands. The Stormwater Handbook does have design criteria that basins are to be set back 50 feet from resource areas, but does not provide the point at which that measurement is made on the basin. It's generally been our approach to take that from the outside toe of the slope that supports the basin. The applicant has rather instead used the floor of the basin that would be subject to inundation during storm events. In either case, this all ties into your second point of meeting standard six under the Mass Stormwater Standards, which deals with critical areas. We have a Zone A surface water protection area at the site associated with Sunken Brook. The Handbook does set forth more stringent treatment criteria for areas discharging to critical areas. The applicant has met those elevated minimums that are reviewed as, when looking at work in critical or near critical areas. However, the standards are very specific, as you mentioned, in referencing that the highest attainable treatment should be sought by project proponents. And you are correct, no alternatives were provided to demonstrate whether the applicant has met that highest attainable method of treatment within the realm of feasibility and the project purpose, or if there was an alternative design out there to better meet that standard.
Thank you, Mr. Nero.
Thank you.
Why don't you remain here for a minute? Does anyone else have a question? Okay, I want to follow up on that. If this were to be approved, can those issues be conditioned to, would it be a valid item to condition to say more treatment or?
So I will say it would admittedly be a tough condition. You know, ultimately, the Commission can choose to implement special conditions as they see fit on an approval to ensure that it meets the provisions of the Act and the Bylaw. However, even as an approval, if an applicant receives an order of conditions approving their project but finds that there are special conditions that are onerous or outside the, what they may feel is the charge of the Commission, they may even choose to appeal an approval so that they can seek a superseding order of conditions from Mass DEP that provides, you know, more straightforward conditions that are in line with the Act. The only issue I would see with a condition like that is it would require design changes, and that's typically something the Commission will review during the public hearing process.
Okay. Are there any other questions for John? Okay, can, can we head over and maybe go by the Bylaw now? Who has questions concerning the application of this project to our Bylaw?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I apologize, Jay, did you?
I was just, okay. I do also have concerns under the local Bylaw. As I understand, the vernal pool present on the site would be effectively surrounded by houses without consideration for a migratory access corridor, which, based on my understanding, could have a substantial adverse impact on the wildlife habitat present in the vernal pool, which is jurisdictional under our local Bylaw. Are my concerns there founded, or would you consider them unfounded?
Yes, the Commission could choose to find that based on what they've reviewed in the project plans and, you know, written peer review comments, that that is the case, that the Commission, you know, does have the discretion under the Bylaw to determine whether a project is going to have adverse impacts on a resource area with regards to the provisions of the Bylaw, including wildlife habitat. And it is worth noting that with regards to that and any kind of, you know, improved protections of the vernal pool, the Commission would only be looking at jurisdictional areas. But as you noted, it is a fact that much of the jurisdictional area surrounding this pool, although the applicant has protected some of the area around the pool with vegetation to remain, there is still development within those jurisdictional areas surrounding the pool, and as you mentioned, alternatives similar to stormwater were not provided.
Thank you.
On that, with the vernal pool, I realize it's going to be isolated and it's going to be built around, but can we really push it? Because we don't have a Bylaw that I'm aware of. It says you have to have corridors or passage. Most of the time, you know, vernal pool somewhere along, it goes into the wetlands. And I'm not saying approve or disapprove, but, you know, we've got to kind of think about this because if we kind of picket them, it's liable to go to court and, you know, drag it down for a while and drag us through the mud too, so.
Right, so, you know, you are correct, the Bylaw does not have specific performance standards for vernal pools, but the Bylaw does have provisions which, you know, again, is at the Commission to exercise based on their interpretation of their Bylaw to allow them to look at activities that may have cumulative adverse effects on resource areas. And so while you are correct, you know, this is a vernal pool that would be surrounded by development, the Commission can make the call either way on whether that would constitute in a direct or indirect cumulative impact on the ability of the vernal pool to function as a vernal pool. And you are correct, if, if the Commission chose to deny the project based on, on that fact, the applicant would have full rights to appeal that, and under the Bylaw, that would go to Superior Court.
Yeah, no, that's the only thing. I mean, it's, you know, a little late, but I mean, it is something for consideration.
Absolutely.
You have a question?
The only question I have is on the infiltration basins and the stormwater management that comes from. If the basins don't work with certain soil conditions and certain things happening, there was no other alternatives to infiltration, if the basins and the ground surrounding all the infiltration basins, there really was no other dealings with the water?
So as far as the larger basins go, that were designed to, you know, handle significant sheet flow from, that get deposited into catch basins and then flow out to the, to the larger stormwater basins, the applicant did provide, you know, we did note in our comment letter that was submitted, that the applicant did provide sufficient test pit data to show that, and then some subsequent redesigns to show that they will maintain the required separation from groundwater, they will draw down within 72 hours, et cetera. With regards though to any of the infiltration structures around the homes where the downspouts will be piped to.
Where does that water go if it doesn't work?
So, you know, that is something the Commission could consider as a special condition. They could require that that construction and installation be overseen by a professional engineer if that would give them sound mind.
If it doesn't work, what's the next step?
Well, the idea would be.
Providing no other options to manage the on-property stormwater.
Right. Well, so there's, you know, the idea behind, you know, I would say those methods of infiltration are fairly common, but I understand the concerns on such a large variable site. The idea behind having kind of a third-party engineering review during construction would be to confirm that they would in fact be functional, because as they're digging for these infiltration systems, it would be apparent whether there's soil conditions, if there's hardpan or localized refusal. So, you know, when the Commission deliberates on whether the project is approvable, they wouldn't just look at whether it's approvable exactly as presented, they can also put in special conditions if they feel that it's going to make the project adhere to the Act and the Bylaw.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
My issue was with the vernal pool.
Okay.
I think we addressed that.
Mr. Chairman, at the conclusion of the discussion, I had some written comments that I'd like to submit into the record.
Can I add something before you guys move on? Can we back up to the vernal pool?
Please.
Just a little bit? All right. Section 6 of the Bylaw also states that the Commission is empowered to deny a permit for failure to cite the project in an alternative manner with less potential impact where such citing is clearly possible. The applicant has maintained that a historic settlement agreement reached with the planning board, to which the Conservation Commission does not appear to have been made party to, entitles them to development of the project as proposed. Therefore, the applicant has not provided any analysis of potential site configuration alternatives that could provide greater protection of the habitat values of the vernal pool. So I think that's just important to consider as well. And also, as far as, you know, we could condition, you know, 12, 15 pages, but at the end of the day, would it change the design ultimately? Most likely, I feel like it would, just from my experience.
Right, and one thing I would add on to that is going back to kind of how the Commission can, can proceed, is if the Commission did choose to approve the project under the Bylaw, they could implement a condition, say where, and I know I bring this up because it has been discussed before, I know Lisa brought it up previously during the public hearing processes, the Commission could condition something like any of the lots within the jurisdiction around that vernal pool would be subject to submitting a standalone notice of intent before they are constructed. So then the Commission could say approve all of the limits of work across the property with the exception of those areas, and once those come in for individual notices of intent, the Commission could then request refinements, maybe pulling some of the limits of clearing back, things like that. Just a consideration.
Do we know approximately how many units are going to be around that vernal pool?
I do not have a definite number, but I can say that, you know, the pool would be.
High density.
What's that?
High density.
High density. The pool would be surrounded by either, well, sorry, to be accurate, the pool would be surrounded by a band of vegetation left behind, you know, essentially encircling the perimeter of the pool, and then beyond that would either be dwellings, driveways, or roadways surrounding it.
Okay, I want to read something here to the members. The section 6 of the Bylaw states that the Commission is empowered to deny a permit for failure to cite the project in an alternate manner with less potential impact where such citing is clearly possible. The applicant has made, okay, Lisa, this was.
I just read it.
This is part of what you had read. Okay, it was also, the Bylaw states that the Commission is empowered to, to deny a permit for failure to avoid or prevent unacceptable significant or cumulative effects. And we really don't know what all these effects would be, but it certainly seems as though that they would, between stormwater, between the runoff from the roofs, from the driveways, you know, are all those basins able to maintain what they are supposed to do? Stormwater discharge within Zone 2 are interim wellhead protection area of a public water supply and stormwater discharge near or to any other critical area require the use of specific resource controls and pollution prevention measures and the specific structural stormwater best management practices determined by the department to be sustainable for managing discharge to such areas as provided in the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. A discharge is near a critical area if there is a strong likelihood of a significant impact occurring to said area. Okay, infiltration basin 6 and 7 discharge near 2, a Zone A associated with Sunken Brook, and infiltration basin 3 and 4 discharge near R2 and Orad, a BMW, a BVW complex associated with vernal pools. Based on surrounding topography, discharges from the basin during high-flow storm events would ultimately reach both of these critical areas and therefore require commensurate treatment. Stormwater discharge to outstanding resource waters and special resource waters shall be removed and set back from the receiving water or wetland and receive the highest and best practice, practical method of treatment. This is per the final project plans and stormwater management design, the stormwater management system will provide 80% removal of total suspended soils and a 1-inch water quality volume. These treatment parameters are the minimum required when discharging stormwater near a critical area, and that's in basins 3, 4, 6, and 7. In addition, the applicant has provided an infiltration basin setback of less than 50 feet from the BVW when measured from the toe of the outside slope associated with the basin. However, even when establishing the setback based on the distance from the BVW and the edge of the basin floor, which is equal to or greater than 50 feet according to the project plans, no details were provided to the submission regarding why a larger setback could not be provided for those basins. The applicant did not provide. The applicant did not provide an assessment of potential design alternatives to support further compliance with the standards. The applicant's position during the public hearing and peer review process was that the settlement agreement reached between the applicant and the Dighton Planning Board, January 16, 2008, of which the Conservation Commission was not party to, precluded them from pursuing any design alternatives that deviated from the plan development during the settlement agreement. Okay, I, I read that, and that was dealing with the, the bylaw, and, you know, for you to have further knowledge of what was there, and I, I believe that you also had the ability to read that on your own, and that was, I guess, mainly for the public record. Are there any further questions of our discussion on this topic?
I'll have some.
I do have some written remarks I'd like to submit to the conclusion of discussion.
Please, please, go ahead with them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does anybody else?
Dave, do you have anything to say?
Nope.
Are you able to hear me? Okay, thank you. Good evening. So, we are here tonight at the conclusion of a long process, which has extensively covered a great deal of information across a number of public hearings. As commissioners, we are tasked with reviewing the information presented during these public hearings and making a fair and impartial decision on the basis of the application before us. The project as presented with this filing is extensive, and there are a variety of considerations. As discussed at the most recent public hearing, there are multiple critical items which remain outstanding as identified during the peer review conducted by Beta Group. I'd like to offer a summary of what I believe to be the most pressing and concerning outstanding issues. As commissioners, we are tasked with administering not only the Wetland Protection Act, but the Town of Dighton Local Conservation Bylaw. This bylaw requires the commission to consider the role of vernal pools as a jurisdictional resource area and important wildlife habitat. Under the proposed plan, the lack of consideration for a migratory access corridor for vernal pool species will result in substantial adverse impact to the functioning of the vernal pool as a wildlife habitat. At our previous meeting, the applicant's wetland consultant stated that the provisions of the local bylaw extend only to wildlife habitat and not to wildlife itself, and on this basis asserted a lack of jurisdiction by this commission. I respectfully reject the assertion as equivocal conflation. The biotic mechanisms which take place within ecosystems to balance the environmental inputs and outputs which comprise them are an integral and intrinsic component of the habitat itself. One is only to examine a simple trophic chain or food web to visually demonstrate the interconnectedness of wildlife with the functioning of its habitat. Simply put, the refusal by the applicant to consider design revisions that would take into consideration a migratory access corridor for use by vernal pool species within jurisdictional areas will have a substantial impact, not only on the wildlife, but on the suitability of the vernal pool habitat to provide an ecosystem capable of adequately supporting wildlife. It is my belief that if I were not to consider this impact, I would not be fulfilling the responsibilities of my appointment to the Conservation Commission. Additionally, there's the outstanding matter of the stormwater basin. This commission heard an eloquent representation by the applicant's attorney, which asserted that there was no conclusive DEP standard for the measurement of a stormwater basin for a resource area. I concur that the commission should not interpret the methodology of its measurement in a way which is arbitrary or capricious. As commissioners, we are tasked with utilizing discretion tempered by a standard of reasonability. I would not be demonstrating a responsible degree of reasonability if I did not take into consideration the close proximity of this basin to Sunken Brook, which is a tributary of a public water supply. For this reason, I believe sound judgment requires a conservative point of measurement, which would place the stormwater basin within the 50-foot buffer zone. At the applicant's most recent public hearing, the applicant's engineer stated that curing this issue would not represent a Herculean design revision, which makes the applicant's refusal to consider it frankly alarming. Moreover, the Wetland Protection Act requires applicants to demonstrate the highest attainable degree of stormwater treatment. While the total suspended solids removal presented by the applicant does exceed the required minimum, there was no additional inquiry or investigation by the applicant to ascertain whether this was the highest amount attainable. The close proximity of the stormwater basin to a critical resource area, truly by my interpretation, inside the 50-foot buffer zone of a critical resource area, potentiates the importance of demonstrating the highest attainable level of stormwater treatment. For this level, for this reason, I also find this filing to be out of compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. We, as commissioners, have a duty to work with applicants. However, this becomes impossible if an applicant is unwilling to consider the feedback of the commission and remains insistent on a design as-is without willingness to entertain modifications of any kind. The concerns presented this evening are not new to the applicant and were articulated previously prior to closing the public hearing. I respectfully fundamentally reject the notion that a settlement with the planning board exempts the applicant from the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission or consideration of the resource areas that we are sworn to protect. While the commission has expressed both willingness and desire to work with the applicant on these matters, it has been met with a recalcitrant and intractable insistence on the design as presented. Regretfully, I find this unacceptable. For the aforementioned reasons, Mr. Chairman, I see no other alternative but to propose a motion to deny the notice of intent from DI Trust II DEP file number SE017-0443.
Okay, I would like to revisit your, is it as a motion? Okay.
Those comments preceded by a motion.
Okay, I would, before I ask for a second, what I am doing, what I would like to do is break it into two parts. Wetland Protection Act, DEP, because, and then bylaw.
Allow me to rephrase my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can we do the, the wetland protection? First of all, is there any other discussion? Okay, before- Okay, would you rephrase your motion? Let's deal with first the Wetland Protection Act with DEP.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose a motion to deny the notice of intent from DI Trust II DEP file number SE017-0443 under the Wetland Protection Act.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to propose a motion to deny the notice of intent from DI Trust II DEP file number SE017-0443 under the local bylaw.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Fair vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our work for DI Trust II on the Forest Street.
We have 21 days to issue the decision, but we promised them to the applicant by the 7th.
By, by March 7th, so that the, we will have the notice of intent completed.
Orders of conditions. We'll have orders, an order, a denial order, completed for both the bylaw and the Wetlands Protection Act.
Okay, and we will be available for signatures to review and to sign, when do you think, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And then we'll send it out unless Joshua wants to pick it up.
Okay, let us move on to our next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Paul, nice job.
Hey, you got that right?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just gave him that.
For your dog. Wait, can I say your mouse?
Okay. Let's give these people a moment to exit, and then we'll go on with our next item.
I've got my daughter's dog, these are my daughter's size. She's got a cavapoo and a mini golden dog. And then, this is my dog, Mini Poodle.
So that'll, that'll give them-
She was, sorry.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to review, discuss, act on an EnRad application by Dean Smith of New Leaf Dighton Energy Storage One LLC for Zero Maned Lane, and that is table two, four, 1824. Next item, review, discuss, act on a continued hearing, abbreviated notice of resource area delineation from Cal Rabello Bell Farms Estates, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Milk Street, map 17, lots 109, 139, and 208, DEP file number 17-489.
Okay, Mr. Rabello could not make it tonight, and I don't believe anyone's here to, on his behalf, but Megan from Weston and Sampson is here on behalf of us to present her findings under peer review.
So we can present her findings but not speak about the other?
Right.
About the applicant present?
So, the applicant requested a continuance. She is going to present her findings, and we're not going to have any discussion about it.
Understood, thank you.
So basically, it'll be what everyone's already got on paper.
Okay.
Okay, that's-
Including the applicant.
Yeah. I'm gonna go without, okay, we just have no time tonight.
I'll just talk about all of my items, thank you.
Get the mouse out of your way.
It's not working tonight, that's okay. Made in China. She, I saw with the email.
I got that.
Okay.
Could bring it up now.
Well, I can get started, at least.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, for the record, my name is Megan Kearns, I'm a wetland scientist with Weston and Sampson. I conducted the peer review at Zero Milk Street, and I would just like to discuss some of my findings with you. I did submit a memorandum that lists in detail some of my findings. I'll walk through some of them more generally with you all tonight and see if you have any questions. So first, I conducted the site visit a few weeks ago. Thank you. I conducted the site visit, oh boy, can I read that far? It's that one? I think so, yeah, thank you. So just to refresh your memory, this is the site at Zero Milk Street. I reviewed the EnRad application, it was just this one application with some maps and a site plan showing the wetland delineated flags, and this is my markup showing some of my findings all out on the site visit, so I'll walk through those with you right now. First, in the EnRad, there were no BVW data forms provided indicating that it is in fact a wetland or an upland, so I requested that those be provided to the commission for review, just to ensure that the wetlands are in fact wetlands. During my site visit, there were several wetland flags that were missing and could not be verified in the field, so I requested that those be rehung. There were several that were also misnumbered, so I have requested that those be rehung in the field as well. There were a few wetland systems that were slightly larger than were field delineated, one of those being Wetland F, which is sort of up in the page left, which I think is north, northeast corner, in addition to Wetland E, which is sort of in the middle of the site. So those were two areas where I believe the wetland is a little bit larger than what was field delineated. There were also some streams that were flagged, that were not flagged using top-of-bank flags, so I've recommended that those be reevaluated as well. There were also some streams that weren't flagged that were inside of the wetlands, so I've requested that those be flagged as well. Let's see, there were two areas that I observed that had some standing water and wetland vegetation that were not flagged as wetlands, so I've requested that the applicant reassess those areas. One of them is in this area right here, if you can see the mouse pointing, there was quite a bit of standing water and some, some sedges coming up, so some data forms in this area would be useful to the commission. This area in here also had quite a bit of standing water and some wetland vegetation, so I've requested some data forms in that area as well. As you know, the time of year is not the perfect time of year for assessing vernal pools, there are a few vernal pools on site, so I was not able to confirm that those are in fact vernal pools at this time. And there also should be the local 25-foot buffer zone added to these plans. Currently, there's only a 100-foot buffer zone coming off of all of these wetlands. I also had a comment that this stream right here might in fact be perennial, so I've requested that they investigate that, in which case that would also result in 200-foot riverfront area in addition to the 100-foot buffer zone. There were also some comments issued from DEP back in the fall, some of these overlap with some of my comments, but just to reiterate DEP's comments, they requested that the applicant calculate the total area of the isolated wetlands to determine that they are in fact isolated vegetated wetlands and not isolated land subject to flooding, so that should be provided by the applicant as well. And that is a brief overview of my memo, I won't go into too many more details, but I'll open it up, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
We really can't.
Oh, no, okay, never mind.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
All right.
But we, we can, we're gonna continue it, and then if we have any questions, I'm sure the applicant is most likely gonna have questions, and then what we're gonna need from you guys is probably an amended scope.
Okay.
Unless you want to wait until we hear back from the applicant, and they provide something else, you know?
I can prepare something, just so we have it.
Yeah.
And we can, we can continue to coordinate.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to re-
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to continue?
Oh, thank you. Need a motion to continue?
The date for the next meeting is?
Four, 18, 24.
Oh, is it? What about March?
21st.
Oh, yeah, we got March.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, motion to continue.
Jack wants to skip a month.
Oh, I just was looking back.
I'm teasing you.
Motion to continue the EnRad for Bell Farms Estates until March 21st, 2021.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is review, discuss, a continued hearing, notice of intent of Zero Elm Street, map 20, lots four, 84-4, from Zero Elm Street for construction of a stormwater basin along the pavement and grating associated with the storage building. A portion of the work falls within the buffer zone to a bordering vegetated wetland, DEP file number 17-491. I will vacate my chair for the moment, and Paul will take over to continue discussion on this.
All right, thank you very much.
The chairman is recusing himself.
Thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
Take it away, please.
Good evening, Tom Morris from Zenith Consulting Engineers. So, since the last meeting, what was brought up that was still pending was input from the Stormwater Committee. We are awaiting their review and discussion, and we'll see what comes up from that. As I understand, we are able to get a decision from you, the Conservation Commission, and will still be pending Stormwater Committee approval. And that would, that's necessary for construction, so you guys approving would not mean we can bypass them.
Understood.
Was agreeing with the stormwater after I brought?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Not that I doubt it.
Not that I doubt it, but I would...
Yep, yep. No, it doesn't bother me.
Thank you very much. I recall reviewing this at previous meetings and everything seemed fairly straightforward to me. I understood the last presentation. Does anybody have any questions, or at least, actually Lisa, I have a question, is if we were to, if someone was to motion to approve this evening, would it be just a motion to approve conditioned on compliance with other permitting bodies, or what would you like to see the structure of a motion if the commissioner chooses to approve?
Standard conditions in there, you know, I mean, one of the things I don't know if you guys did consider, but placards, we require placards with, we have placards that we require on posts. So I don't know if you have to revise the plans for that.
Where do you like those placed?
Well, we don't want you to, so basically, at the twenty-five foot is usually where we put it, but that's been on single-family house lots, so you and I-
And we're not working up, we do have a portion that goes close to, don't we?
So maybe at the fifty?
Yep.
Just in vicinity of the project. It doesn't have to be on this whole site, yeah. But yeah, to back up, I mean, it is gonna be conditioned based on you, making sure you attain all your, obtain all your other permits. And then one of them specifically would be, the SWIP would be necessary, one of the conditions.
Yep.
But I know some towns require the SWIPs upfront, but I know you need to find the contractor first before you complete a SWIP, so as long as it's before construction is-
Right, and that's generally how we've worked it with many other projects, is we're happy to provide a copy to anyone in the town who wants it, but we usually do it after all the permitting is done, then we go ahead and do the SWIP.
Makes sense to me.
Okay. Is there a motion at this time?
I have one more question.
Oh, please, I apologize.
I just plan on doing managing, ice management, chemical-wise, in that park lot that dumps right down into, after it hits that basin, it goes right into a conservation area.
Good question.
I know you probably haven't thought about it, but it's something I've thought about.
Right. So if there's something, if there's something specific, I think we'd be open to a condition on that.
Okay, that's really, that was my only thing that was like, I know that area extremely well, I spent a lot of time in those woods, and that is a sensitive area down there. Yeah, and to think that you're gonna just salt the crap out of it in a snowstorm and it's gonna go right in there and just dump salt water down there, I can guarantee a negative effect.
Yep, I will say, I'm all for a condition, that's fine by me. I will say that the system that we've put in for stormwater should be fairly effective at removing that.
Okay.
I do agree that if it's like, if it's very heavy, then it could bypass, obviously.
Right, and if they push it into the vegetation, like most of these guys do, they don't just leave it on the pavement, right?
It's gonna run down the hill and not even touch your basin.
Right.
And...
So we can, I'm willing to talk with Lisa and the rest to figure out some sort of solution. I don't wanna say no, but I definitely think because of how close and sensitive that area can be, if we're just dumping salt down the back of that hill, we're eventually gonna do some damage.
Yeah. And the other thing to consider, if you wanna just mention to Mr. Eman, we usually put a condition in there that no fertilizers, no pesticides, herbicides are gonna be used. So hopefully he's okay with that.
I would ima, I mean, it's not, I don't imagine him viewing this as a pristine park-like setting, so I'm sure that's okay.
Well, we do, I mean, we wanna keep it natural.
Well, I just mean that it has to be like the nicest grass he's putting all the-
The landscaping, yeah.
But in the summertime, if you don't feel like painting a guy a weed whack, you put a backpack spray on him and dump ten gallons at his back in seconds. That's Brian.
But really, what you need to do is plant natives in your landscaping and you don't have to do that as much, correct?
I don't know the final details on the edges yet, we haven't really, but, and then definitely maintaining that basin to make sure it's efficient.
Yes, and we do have an O and M written out for that.
Cool. Cool.
All right, we have a motion to approve the notice of intent on Zero Elm Street with conditions.
Second?
Approve, just wanna remind you guys, so we're approving the Wetlands Protection Act and the bylaw, so going forward, I just think we have to stay.
Yep.
Two mo, two?
Yep, make two motions.
Pick which one you want first.
Bylaw.
Okay.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion under the Wetland Protection Act?
Motion under the Wetland Protection Act on notice of intent on Zero Elm Street.
Second?
To approve, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And issue orders.
And issue orders of conditions.
Motion made?
Second?
Motion made in second, any discussion, hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Do you want us to mail them or are you gonna pick them up?
I'd say mail them.
Okay.
Come on, you wanna come down to Dyton?
To you or?
It's actually not far, it's like less than an hour from my house.
To you, not to Mr. Eman, to you.
I never even got to touch the gavel.
I don't wanna touch it either. I only did once when people were too lazy. Okay, passed. Okay. Next item, review, discuss, act on a continued hearing, notice of intent, eighteen eighty-six, County Street, map seventeen, lot eighty-four for Truck and Trader LLC, file number seventeen dash four ninety-three. The applicant has withdrawn the application, no action necessary. Review, discuss, act on a new hearing, request for determination of applicability on Main Street Road Row near number six forty-one for Massachusetts Electric Company to install one utility pole within the Road Row. The work falls within the hundred-foot riverfront area and within the one-hundred-foot of the hundred-year floodplain and within one-hundred feet of the bordering vegetated wetland.
Mr. Chairman, while I did not receive an abutter notification on this, that I recall, I live very close to this parcel, so just to be on the safe side, I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay. And you are?
Good evening.
I live right next to her.
I'm his neighbor.
Are you guys all neighbors?
I wasn't anything, you said.
Good evening, my name is Nick Hebel. I work for Conoco Engineers and Scientists representing Massachusetts Electric Company. With me, I have brought the green cards for the abutters from the certified abutters list that we received back.
Thank you.
I think that this should be a fairly straightforward process. They're looking to install one new utility pole, which is gonna be P fifty dash twenty-five, and it's gonna be located between pole fifty and pole fifty-one on Main Street and Dyton. Let me see here, this filing was only filed with the local ordinance, or local bylaw, as it is considered a minor project under the Wetland Protection Act, so therefore it was not sent to the state level. The pole resides within ten feet of the shoulder of the road, so therefore, under C, three-ten CMR, ten point oh-two, two B, two H, it is considered a minor project at the state level. The pole is located in riverfront area associated with Muddy Cove Brook. It is also within the one-hundred-foot buffer to bordering vegetated wetlands, but it is in the fifty-foot landward portion of the buffer. The pole is also within a hundred feet of the hundred-year floodplain. This installation of the utility pole should require no tree removal, as the area is already clear, and it should be a simple process where they will bring the truck over, auger the pole down, or auger the hole down, set the pole all in one day. They will set up erosion and sediment controls, if necessary, where necessary. They, I think included in our request for determination of applicability, we included kind of a cut sheet of typical controls that they generally use, but it's generally silt sacks and straw bales, dependent on what would work best in the area.
Was it straw wattles?
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, thank you. So Massachusetts Electric Company is requesting a negative determination from the commission tonight.
So we don't usually like straw wattles, we usually like the filter mitt, just so you know.
The compo sock?
Yep.
Okay, I can request that they use that.
Great, and tell them not to put the stake right through it.
Yeah.
On either side for the details.
Okay, so we're looking for a negative determination. Is there a motion to issue a negative determination?
Motion to-
Everybody knows what negative means, in this instance means they don't need to move forward with a permit for an order of conditions.
To proceed with the law.
We find that this is a minor activity, like the state does, and when we do our bylaw, I think that's something we should consider as utilities like that.
Okay, okay, so motion?
Motion to accept a negative outcome on Main Street, Road Row, rear number six forty-one.
No, no, change that up. Motion to-
Issue a negative determination.
Issue a negative determination.
Isn't that what they said?
No, accept a negative outcome.
A little different.
Motion to accept.
No, issue.
Issue a negative determination.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you guys.
All right, guys, you gotta come back to work.
Would the negative determination be mailed?
Yep, we can mail it. I'll probably get it out to you next week, okay?
Oh, yeah, no worries. Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue along. Review, discuss, act on a new hearing, abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, also known as an Enrad, application from Alexander Ribero, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Tiger Lily Road, map two, lots four dash five, file number seventeen dash four ninety-five.
Good evening, Greg Driscoll of JBD Civil here tonight, representing Alex Ribero of Zero Tiger Lily Drive.
You said Drake, Gre, Dis-
Driscoll.
Driscoll.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, so this is the first meeting for this, and just a quick overview, this is a single-family home lot on Tiger Lily Drive or Tiger Lily Road. It's one of the undeveloped lots on the street. Mr. Ribero has purchased the property and he's looking to eventually build a home on it. Right now, we've filed the Enrad in order to get permission to go in and do soil testing for septic system. So once we get through this process, we'll be out there with border health.
I'm gonna back up a minute, Tiger Lily Road, I know it's a fairly new street in town, could you?
Sure, it's off of Maple Street.
Maple, okay.
Yep, and Fresh Meadow Lane is also another road in that development.
William Street next to the, uh, forty-four William Street past the car auction.
Okay, no, so as you're going, either, I don't know if it's west or north on, okay, yeah.
There you go.
All right, no, 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 I, I got it, I got it, I've driven down there, but it's-
So where is your lot?
The end of the-
Back corner, front?
Yes, back, there's a cul-de-sac and there's two lots on the cul-de-sac.
End of the cul-de-sac.
And this is the one to the-
Yeah.
All right, so that's kind of the overview of why we're here and what we're doing. We understand that we just received today the proposal from Weston and Sampson for the review, and seeing as this is a single-family home lot and we're just, we're looking to get out there and do soil testing, we'll be back for a notice of intent eventually, could we get additional proposals for the peer review? Or?
You know what, I'm gonna have to ask a member of the selectmen's here, and I'm not sure within the contract, so the town has a contract, a town-wide contract with Weston.
Okay.
And so we may be able to, he's here, I have a question though, general que, a question about your project. So, you know there's drainage structures on your property, right? Looks like there's a fair bit, there's some rocky swales in there that maybe was created at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Uh, right there.
At the front, yeah. At the front of your... The riprap area is, right? Are these tree or riprap? Riprap, it says. So there's riprap there and there's riprap here, so I just wondered if there's some drainage element in this?
No, it would show up in the plan. We can double-check with the surveyor.
Yeah.
I'm sure he would have put that on there, but that's something we'll take note of and...
When I walked the property, there was no running water or any, anything that showed me that there was any area that was directing water, there was a basin that directs it over, at the end of the cul-de-sac, it directs it kind of between the two properties, and there was nothing that showed-
Yeah, I would check with the planning board too, though, to make sure there's no some drainage esmen or something that's-
Once it got planned, they planned it like that for a reason, and the planning board will have all the details as to what they required.
Before you get too deep into this, I would look into it a little bit more.
That's a simple thing.
Yeah, this is early in the process, we wanna figure this stuff out now.
Okay, you got green lines, blue lines, yellow lines?
All right, so I'll go over the plan real quick. The A-series wetland is this wetland right here on-
Okay, so everything within blue is wet?
Is bordering vegetated wetland.
Okay.
So with wetland flags. The red line is the twenty-five-foot no-touch buffer. The yellow line is the fifty-foot no-building line, and then the blue is the hundred-foot buffer. So we have-
I'm sorry, that last one was?
The green is the one-hundred-foot buffer.
Okay, all right, and so your intent later is to put a septic in, and where would that be?
We're looking to do soil testing in back, in the back corner. We'd like to have the house towards the back and get some privacy. So we're looking to place the house back in here, the septic, the well, we're looking maybe-
So how would you, how would you get access to that property?
Well, we're not there yet, we're on the ground.
But I'm also giving them something to think about.
Yep.
As you said to, you know, to do a little research, so how would you access, you're gonna go through two wetlands to get there?
Oh, no, no, we're not gonna do that.
No, they'd be going through the buffer zone, but there's a bunch of ledge out there.
Yeah, so we'll try to come in through here somewhere, through this point right here, in between the wetlands, to the back area, where it's, you know, there's a section right here that's outside the buffer zone, where the house will go.
You won't be able to find your house on a dark night.
I know, it's just that's what we're looking for. That's why you moved today.
Yeah, that's what everybody says.
I live fairly close, the lot was, was, I knew of the lot, kinda came across it, kinda wanted to do a little bit of it, the excavation world, I bet you kind of project on Dyton, probably place a bridge to cover.
Oh, yeah.
So I understand the wetlands as well. Greg has a great idea of the idea here, we're literally working around the wetlands, so we can try to wear as much as we can. We're looking to get in there and do some soil testing, and then you guys will allow us to get in there and start probing around. I have, we have delineated the wetlands with Brad from Wetlands. We have done some of our homework, so we can try to be safe to, and do everything properly. So I mean, just here, I appreciate you asking the questions, 'cause, you know, we have thought all this through and trying to get ahead of it, and that's what we decided tonight.
You know, this is part of our mission too, is- You know, this is part of our mission too, is to assist people and, you know, if you can do it, wonderful. If you can't do it, well, it's better than, you know, trying to do it and wasting time and money.
So do you have all of those lines delineated onsite?
Yes, those were flagged.
Yeah.
There's, there's flags noted on the plan, they were surveyed, located.
Cool. You know where you can find where you can't.
And Weston, well, not yet, 'cause Weston and Sampson's gonna review it. So it's two acres, so that's why. Mr. Chairman, can you address Lenny, can you ask Lenny the question, please?
Two weeks.
Or Paul, can you?
That's right.
We have a question for you.
Selectman Hall, the applicant wanted to inquire, could you please confirm if this is accurate, that the town's engagement with Weston and Sampson makes them our required peer review agent?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
There was no, there was no caveat in there for conservation? We couldn't still use Marty if we wanted to?
I thought we could.
Two, two and a half acres.
I thought we could.
I haven't, I'm gonna listen.
That, that's what, that's what this is, our contention about.
But ultimately, she would work with Weston and Sampson.
I have one other question that might help you. You don't plan on touching anything in the back, anything this way.
Can you just lower it?
If they delineate, can you bring that number?
Sure.
So to know where you can go, if you only had to, Weston and Sampson to cover this carda, and where you wanna access, that might lower the cost if you get, they don't need to worry about this, pretty much this zone right here. If they don't have to go all on here, Weston and Sampson's total.
Well, yeah, so I'm not gonna have Weston and Sampson ever review wetlands that are onsite.
Okay, so that number was for just that carda sort of?
But there's a buffer that comes onsite, so she should walk and medicating.
Okay.
The number has also been reduced, 'cause I asked them to reduce it, 'cause it's a single-family house lot. It was double that before, so.
My gosh.
Good job, Lisa.
My gosh.
Yeah, that's why I looked up all those things before, anyway, 'cause that, that was the old.
Old place on that.
So would, um, going through this process with them and having them look at it now, you think that's gonna save us when we do submit for the NOI?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Some time and effort, you know, on their part.
Right, because then, you know, you have more confidence in your project, knowing that the commission already approved the delineation, you know where your setbacks are, you know where your ledge are, ledge is. Right now, we're just saying we think the wetlands are here, and we think that's an upland.
I, I paid to have the wetlands delineated, I paid a survey company to go over and survey the lot.
I know.
So I'm, I'm guessing just confused on how we're assuming, didn't they go out there and delineate the same way they're going to?
Correct, but every town has a review person, and I am the review person in Dayton, but I am part-time. I'm not full-time. I don't have time to walk all these, that's why we sub it out. So we sub it out to the company that the town says we need to. I don't know, maybe we can get a waiver, we can talk to the board of selectmen and say, for single-family house lots, we would like to use, um, a different company that isn't as pricey.
Now, okay, now you're gonna have to put in.
There's not gonna be any stormwater.
A septic system.
Yeah.
And I would assume a well back there. So your setbacks is, your setback is a, uh, for the, for the septic system is a hundred feet from the wetlands, and your setback for the well is one hundred feet from your septic.
And.
So, so you've gotta, you know, figure all this into it, and then of course you're gonna put your house, uh, and, you know, however it's configured.
And one more thing.
That would be his job.
Well, there's more to it, so I think you're in an ORW there?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so setbacks to tributaries.
There's a segregation over this way.
Yeah.
I did take a look at that and.
That's the segregation there?
The, the distance is, it's pretty far away, I wasn't, I'm not sure.
But I mean, you're in an ORW, so the BBWs are associated with the ORW, like we were talking about with Forest Hills. So any tributaries on this property, you have, you have to stay two hundred feet away for a perk and a septic system from a tributary. So if there's any intermittent streams, I don't know if Brad found any intermittent streams.
He didn't, I asked about that, and, and I do, I have the, the ton of it in wellhead, uh, and surface water protection areas mapped that, that maps the Zone As, so I know we're not near a Zone A.
Okay.
Um, but we are within Zone C, so.
Okay.
Do we need to be that far away for a septic in order to Zone C?
Um, a Zone C, well, does the polygon, the ORW polygon, come over onto the end of Tiger Lily there?
Uh, I'd have to check that separately. I did include a copy of the zoning map that, that proves the, uh, the Zone A.
I think Brad said it in, um.
I have his memo here. Yeah, he says, not a, not located in estimated priority habitat, does not contain certified rental pools, does not contain USGS map stream, does not contain land subject to flooding, and is not within a critical envi- an area of critical environmental concern, that's all in.
He didn't say anything about an ORW, you know. I'm sorry, I don't have my iPad right now, I pull it up, the mapping.
Yeah.
So we can look at that, and there's a layer.
I, I think it's gonna show up as an ORD because of, I think it's a Zone C.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, Maple Swamp, Maple, Maple Swamp Road, that whole area, and you're so close to the segregation, I believe you, you're right, yeah.
So what implications does that have, this?
So two hundred feet from a tributary or a river, and a hundred feet from BBW for septic systems.
Okay, alright, so he, I did ask him if there were any intermittent streams or anything, and he said no.
Great.
So I definitely checked on that, so went out looking into all this, so, okay, we should be okay with the septic system back in that area.
Do you think there's any ti- any chance of us getting a waiver for that, for like, single-family houses? Do you think we should approach the selectmen on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so you can use my, for consulting, but the ultimate decision would come to, before Weston and Sampson. Or they would make the official ruling.
Yeah, I already did kind of put a bug in Jim Riordan's ear, I told him this is, you know, a single-family house lot, and he did reduce the price, but I think it would be good to get another price if we could. Um, there's not gonna be any follow-on work for it, there's no stormwater, 'cause it's a single-family house, yeah, um.
What size septic are you doing? How many bedroom?
Just a full bedroom, just for me and kids.
Typical.
Do you have any zoning? Zoning changes you're requesting?
No.
You had no zoning variances you're gonna have to request? Great.
So would this, would this be, um, like a single-discipline peer review? Is this gonna be involved multidisciplinary peer review, or, or no?
No, it wouldn't be, just, yeah, that's why I was asking.
Right, so in that case, it might be appropriate for us to approach the board of selectmen and.
Yeah.
See if there's any opportunity.
Okay, so, uh, what we can do then is continue this hearing.
Yep.
But give permission that if you find a peer review person, or if our current peer review company comes down to a satisfactory price, we can give the go-ahead to go in.
Yeah.
Without delaying them another month.
Yeah.
Because, you know, uh, uh, all these months that add up, especially with the one that we just approved tonight, month after month, I mean, it's, it's totally unfair to the applicant.
But just know you're threading the needle through some of those areas.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I understand.
When it comes to erosion control, this is, this is what we do.
Okay, most people aren't that person, so that's why we said.
Yeah, Alex is with, um, Luciano's.
Yeah, so excavation, you know, operating, all we do is wetland remediations, um, covert seawalls, remnants is right up. I thread the needle if we're gonna get one.
This isn't easy.
I'm not that person, so.
Right.
Helps the reading.
Yeah. On a daily basis, we don't deal with contractors that are building their own house, you know what I mean?
Yeah. You know, I, I hope you see that we're, that it's us trying to assist you and not give you, uh, uh, just negative vibes on everything, because if it works out, great, but if, but if it doesn't, it saves you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, uh, does that sound, does that sound adequate to you, that if we continue the hearing? Yeah, but a, I, I don't know what price range is, is satisfactory, but I, I, I saw the first one, and, and I gulped on it.
Okay.
And, um, uh, but if something comes up, and Lisa comes up, you know, with something that, uh, another.
If you win the conversation, maybe we can get them, get something, um, or you'll still have to vote on it, but maybe you could give me authority to approve.
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Okay.
To, to approve the.
Before the next meeting?
If, if there's a satisfactory, uh, amount that can, that they're willing to put in the fifty-three G.
So would, would a motion be something to the effect of proposing a motion to send to peer review, um, subject to confirmation by the applicant of.
I think the first thing would be to give Lisa the authority to, uh, accept a peer review price.
Have to find first.
That is accept, defined, right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Uh, um, um, that's acceptable to the applicant, and then the second motion would be to continue the hearing.
So does that leave it up to you to search for this person?
Yeah, I will, yeah.
Okay.
If, if we can.
Right, and that's why I'm gonna ask to put it on the agenda for the next, which is five, six.
Okay, that's next, next week.
Clarify.
Okay, so, so it's gonna be a week, so we're trying to expedite things for you.
I'm trying to understand.
Okay, uh, let's see, do we give Lisa the authority to search and, and.
Absolutely.
To find a reasonably priced peer review, uh.
They have to be insured, right, Lenny? Yeah, we went through this before, alright.
Okay, is there such a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
No, you, you made the motion, I can't, I'm not making the motion, I can't.
I do have a continuance form you're gonna sign, though.
Second.
Motion to give Lisa, is there a motion to give Lisa the authority to, uh, to find a less expensive peer review that's acceptable to the applicant? You can say, I make that motion.
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, is there a motion to continue the hearing till next month?
Motion to continue the hearing till next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, what's the date of the next meeting?
Um, next meeting is going to be Thursday.
Three twenty-one?
March twenty-one. Yep, Thursday is the first.
Excellent, thanks everyone, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you, uh, working with us, Alex.
Appreciate you coming, absolutely, welcome to Dayton.
Okay, uh, next, Review Discuss Act on a New Hearing, request for determination of applicability from New England Power Company to conduct archaeological excavations from south of Hot Street to the Totten River, at various locations along the V-five and S-eight, one, one-five kilovolt, it looks like transmission line. We're just proposed within jurisdictional wetland areas.
Is there, am I mistaken, is there an exemption of some kind for archaeological?
Hey, Jim, you gave me a hard time last time on the DL show.
Oh, no, by law, okay, alright, I, I did my homework, though, I remembered.
Hello, Lisa.
Give it back and forth.
Yeah, that's right. Reading Commission members, uh, my name is Adam Rosenblatt, I'm with VHB, I'm a senior project manager. I'm here representing Mass Electric Company, New England Power, also doing business to National Grid. So, um, I'll give you a little background, this is a project that's been in development with, um, the electric company for a number of years. I was actually before, um, the commission back in two thousand twenty-one, for what were, was a geotechnical investigation to support this project. Um, and the project is to basically maintain three transmission circuits that run through the town. There's, um, six other towns that are associated with this line project. Uh, the lines are the V-five U-six line, which, uh, both share a lattice tower. Um, these are the, um, the lines that are actually right up the street here, that cross the river, and then head south, goes past, um, Main Street, um, Brook Street, and heads down, um, to Swansea and then Somerset. Um, the other circuit is the, um, the S-eight circuit, and that circuit, um, is the one that's on the wood poles, that's in that same transmission right-of-way, okay? Um, the, the plan is to, um, reconstruct these lines, uh, the lattice towers are from the nineteen twenties, um, and the wood poles are generally from the seventies, okay? Um, the, the project, um, has completed the geotechnical investigation that were before you, um, back in two thousand twenty-one. Um, that was done in two phases, and then with COVID, there were some delays, so the project's still in the design phase. Um, we are planning to come back to the commission here with a notice of intent for the actual construction of the project. Um, that could be sometime within probably the next two hearings, you could expect to see that NOI from us. Um, what we're here for today is to continue to do some of the investigatory activities that are needed to complete, uh, the design of the project. Um, these are considered, um, archaeological excavations or test pits that are meant to document and protect underground resources that are in the ground. Um, the electric company has, um, subcontracted with the Public Archaeology Lab, or PAL, to do these investigatory activities. Um, the way they do them is basically where they, um, want to site a tower, um, for what will be the reconstruction of the lines. They go out and they dig a test pit, which is dug by hand, unfortunately for them. Um, it's thirteen by thirteen feet, um, and it is generally to a depth of no more than four feet. They do have to stop the water table, so they won't go below water, um, the groundwater table. They also won't de-water to get to the four feet. Um, the spoils from the excavation are generally, um, side-cast, adjacent to it, and they do their investigation in a quadrant pattern, so they do sort of like four corners and document as they go. Generally, after they've excavated the first one or two, they start to backfill the others as they go around. Um, we are proposing to install down gradient erosion control, um, for those that are in, um, and adjacent to sensitive areas, um, which would be anything in the buffer zone or near a wetland. Um, compost filter sock is what's proposed for that. Um, they're very meticulous about, um, trying to put the dirt back in the hole, the way it actually came out of the hole. What's that?
So stabilization takes quicker.
Uh, well, it's more for, um, maintaining the integrity of the, the area, um, for purposes as if they don't decide to do the hole, uh, the excavation there for the future tower, that they've kind of left it intact. Um, and then at the surface, um, they will tend to try and preserve what is the litter layer and what comes off the, you know, the upper few inches, and put that back. Um, it's not always possible, you know, with what they're doing, um, so they will then top-dress with a seed and some kind of a light mulch, because they wanna do this work still in the winter, we're proposing something like a, a light wood chip, just because, uh, straw, which they typically like to use, like a weed-free straw, you know, with the storms we get, it blows around a lot, um, and the, the wood chip, you know, won't, um, be so thick that it will encumber vegetation from coming up through it, so that's the plan. Um, the compost filter socks would get wrecked out when they're done. Um, they do erect, um, like a small pop-up tent or canopy when they do this work, and they do use, um, straw bales as like a way to insulate the ground so that they could still dig in the winter when there's frost. Um, so you will see that sort of activity. Um, that straw bale, um, remains will be either used onsite or removed, you know, when they're done. Um, and, and that's basically it, they will try and drive a pickup truck as close as they can, they obviously are not gonna drive through wetlands or anything like that. Um, the, the bigger project later will come back with proposed temporary, uh, construction map, access roads and work pads that you may be more accustomed to from prior projects that go through town. Um, but this one, they'll get as close as they can using existing access roads and whatnot, um, and then they'll walk in the rest of the way. Uh, these folks generally are using sieves and wheelbarrows and, you know, it's all hand shovels and spades, and the digging is very slow. Each one takes, um, up to a couple of weeks, because of, you know, how meticulous it is with the investigation that they have to do and all the documentation and, you know, collection of the artifacts that they do, um, that they do. and, you know, collection of the artifacts that they do, um, that they do, you know, take out of the ground, um, because the work is being done under, um, both a federal permit and a permit from the, um, Massachusetts Historic Preservation Heritage Commission, um, whatever they find is property of the Commonwealth, um, so that is actually, you know, stored and then curated in a way to, you know, do research.
What are some kinds of artifacts that have been found in the, uh, local vicinity already?
Um, well, so I do not work for PAL, um, I am a wetland scientist, so I can tell you it's going to be, uh, things that I'm familiar with, which are things like, um, you know, if they were making stone tools, you might find, um, chipping debris, um, things like that, um, they do tend to go for, uh, like quartz or hotter rock, it could be things like you might be familiar with, like just finding an arrowhead, you know, or other stone tools and things like that, um, there's, I'm sure, a lot more to it, they do look for, you know, like, uh, stained layers of soil that might be, uh, like, uh-
Carbon.
Yeah, exactly, you know, carbon, you know, to, you know, show where a campsite was or something like that.
And that is, do you move pits, like what, what's the next?
So they're going to document, um, and collect to preserve, so the idea is they will take out what's in the ground because it would get destroyed later when they come back to put the tower in.
Okay.
Some, some locations, you know, where there is, uh, high sensitivity, there was design changes that were made, um, and are accommodated, you know, um, you know, with that information that's been collected so far, um, but in this case, it's, it's more to protect the resources that are in the ground and preserve them for future education and use, um, you know, so that when the project comes back, um, with its full construction that they're not impacting what's in the ground, they've already taken it out.
Okay, so, uh, uh, I'm under the assumption that you're looking for a negative determination.
That would be great if you would be willing to do so.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, no, my only question is, so I was able to confirm with Lisa that under the Wetland Protection Act, this activity would be exempt, it's an archaeological excavation, um, as far as the state of, um, how it interacts with the bylaw, Lisa, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, um, so we don't have any exemptions for utilities and exploration in there right now, so, um, this is something to consider when we revise our, I think it should be, you know, included when we revise.
Okay, and, under exempt or whatever, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, because, you know, these utility companies, they take, put a lot of effort into their plans and they really do, um, from what I've seen.
They, they want to be good stewards, they want to be good neighbors, you know, they don't want to make enemies of anyone, um, they're, you know, they go above and beyond compared to what you may be used to for, you know, other types of developments, so-
They tell us if they find anything cool?
So they do issue tons of reports that are really thick, um, I don't ever read through them, but someone gets paid a lot of money to do those, um, and we generally are not allowed to divulge the information specifically because of how sensitive it is, um, you know, it, you, we can probably generally tell you what are some of the things they find, but we couldn't-
They find Jimmy off of there.
-show you exactly where all the locations are for fear of, with documents becoming public records, someone could go and try and dig those up.
Gotcha, okay. So, Lisa, in, based on your opinion, would a negative determination be appropriate?
Correct, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a negative determination.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, I should get it to you next week.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh- To Review Discuss Act on a New Hearing, A Request for Determination of Applicability From Joseph Rogers, Twenty-Six Thirty-One Pleasant Street To Repair A Septic System. The site is within a jurisdictional wetland resource area flood zone.
Good evening, my name is Brad Fitzgerald from SFG Engineering, Twenty-Eight Main Street in Lakeville, this is a septic system repair, the only, we did have wetlands flagged across Pleasant Street and across the right-of-way to the right side of our property, um, all our proposed work is outside the buffer zones of, the hundred-foot buffer zones of those border vegetated wetlands, however, we are within the flood zone of the Totten River, so that's why we're filing, because we're within the flood zone, we're proposing, um, to keep the septic tank if it's sound or replace it if it's not, followed by a pump chamber, followed by a new leaching area, the existing leaching area will be pumped and abandoned, uh, prior to the start of work, I'm sorry, we will put in, um, erosion control, and, um, once the work is completed, um, all exposed surfaces will be graded, loamed, and seeded, and the erosion control will stay in place until that grass is taken. Um, the filling of the flood zone is approximately twenty-one cubic yards, which, based on the, the river and the ocean, it's not going to make any effect at all on, um, causing downstream flooding.
No compensations needed because it's coal's still there?
Yeah. Okay, this is-
Am I correct, um, from my recollection of the bylaw, is, will this be just simply a repair and not an enlargement?
Correct.
Lisa, I believe, is, is there an exemption for repair of an existing septic system that does not involve enlargement? I believe there may be.
Yeah, but, um, well, not under the local bylaw, um, but-
We're still in, to make sure they put controls around it-
Now, it's an actual, um, septic system, but the, the leaching area has failed.
And that's how many, and I, because of the, you know, that'd be like condemning a house.
Right, right.
But, uh, but to say, you know, take the protections, uh, that are necessary to prevent, uh, erosion from it, and, uh, and it's going to be a pump-up chamber, so you're going to be building it up, how many feet?
One.
Only one foot, okay, and so then, then it'll, it'll go down from there, so that-
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, um, and Lisa has all the information as far as the, um, your plan for erosion control and all that?
It's all right on the plan.
Yeah, so, so it's really important that we use the filter mitt and not straw bottles,
um- I do expect filter mitt, right?
Yeah, you did, thank you, um, but then, my other question is, what did I see? I thought I saw a three-foot slope, it's one foot?
Three to one is the slope itself.
The existing one?
So, the one foot is going to drop-
Okay.
Will be spread over three feet.
Alright, um, so I received a call from the attorney of the buyer-
Mm-hmm.
And he, um, I guess they're going to be, might be looking for some changes at the Board of Health meeting?
Yeah, Jim, Jim Maggi, uh, called me on that yesterday, um, I'd never even knew there was a buyer, um, so Jim and I have worked on some things, um, I'm waiting to get an approval here, if we do anything, all we would do is maybe lower the system a foot.
So it would reduce, yeah, that's my only concern.
And would reduce the mound by a foot.
How many bedrooms is that designed for right there? How much is the original one right now in?
Would be the same, it's, there's no increase in flow, we can't do that, three bedrooms, yeah, um, when you-
The other buyer wanted to increase it.
They can't, because-
That's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, what happens is when you ask for a variance to the water table, any, any variance at all, then you cannot increase the number of bedrooms, that, that, it becomes, if you increase the number of bedrooms, it's considered new construction under Title V, and you get no variances.
You were acknowledging how many it is now here today?
Yep.
That somewhere down the road with asking the Board of Health questions, it doesn't turn into a five-bedroom-
Yeah.
-septic, and it's like-
It's on the plan, it's on the assessors' field card, it's all-
Awesome, it's all on that.
So it, it wouldn't be exempt because it's in the, in the flood zone, under the Wetlands Protection Act?
Correct.
So-
Which is why we filed a noticement, ten, uh, I mean, an RDA.
Yeah, but I think we can give a, uh, negative determination, they have, the access is important, so, um-
Is it on the, I haven't seen that plan yet.
Are they going to go down this road, Cherry Street?
I don't, no, I think they're going to come in on the left side because they don't own the road on Cherry Street.
So when they go to bid that out, hopefully, can you just add access to the plan?
See this deck?
So that, yeah, so that, and then, um, I don't know, do you guys want to look at this a little bit before you make a decision?
Just, I just want to see where it's laid out.
This is, uh, oh, I, I do know. Thank you, appreciate it.
There we go, okay.
Is your deck over there?
Yeah, it's Pleasant Street, okay.
This is Pleasant Street, this is that with all the ducks and everything over there.
Oh, yeah, I know exactly where this is, okay.
So, we're outside, you know, it's a flood zone.
Is this just going to jump into this guy's yard?
Here's a hundred foot from this one.
Flood zone, yeah.
If I'm going to discharge water from my property onto the neighbors.
Yeah. Okay, so will you just dig out all the old soils and drop in fresh sand?
Yeah, we actually put it beyond the existing system, so we wouldn't have to deal with that.
Okay, alright. Now, if you were to dig out the old, would that be considered hazardous waste?
I hear that, yes, I, I don't know that for sure, but people, installs it-
Pretty level, yeah.
They try to avoid doing that because some places consider it hazardous.
That's where it draws.
Or you put it in Paul's garden and it would, the vegetables would grow like crazy.
Yeah, some guys just drop it in the yard and let it dry out.
Hey, that's the old expression, night soil.
Oh, yeah?
That's what it was, night soil.
I live on a wetland, Jim, I can't plant vegetables.
I, I always wondered what that expression meant when my, when my grandpa, my grandmother would talk about the night soil, uh, she would have my uncle go out there with the bucket and to add the lid and, and throw it on the garden.
Alright, we know why you're so tall.
Okay, thank you, okay, uh-
Can you just get the, get the revised plan before the Board of Health meeting that shows the access?
Sure.
And then, um, well, I was wondering if you guys would look at that change?
Yep.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion to issue a negative determination?
I'd like to propose a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability for Joseph Rogers of Twenty-Six Thirty-One Pleasant Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa, what's under the, the bills payable?
I'll, I have them right here, I'll remove them.
Okay.
He wants to, can he go next? Oh, yeah. He picked up, so if he does pick it up.
Okay, yeah, if we take each other, or someone's request, and we take them out of order, who's at the very end?
Well-
Four eighteen-
Hart Street, um, okay, that's the only one, because there's other people here, too, that, that are going to be, um, alright.
You have to vote to take it out of order.
Lisa, are these, uh, all, these have already been signed, all of these?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, um, do we need a motion then to do anything on this, or?
No, it's just, I don't think so.
I'd recommend, just as a, from a parliamentary standpoint, that we just vote as a commission to approve them, even though I believe, some of these have already been paid because they're payroll.
Yeah, okay, um, we have, uh, conservation agent, uh, we have, um, office assistant, and these are, uh, let's see, four, we have, um, Gay and Gay on the Strawberry Field, okay, do you want them all listed, or shall we just, let, let's do it as a group here to, um, authorize the payment of our agent and assistant, office assistant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion to approve the payroll which has been incurred since our last meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have, um, uh, Beta Group, uh, for a review of an ENRAD of twenty-two hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-three cents, now, is that a 53G, Lisa?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it starts with two forty, it's a 53G on that revenue line, or the expense line, excuse me.
Wait a minute, where's?
What is, what is the site, is it Forest Hills?
See, the account number starts with two hundred and forty, that means it's a 53G.
Two forty is fifty-three, okay, alright, um, that's to authorize payment, uh, to Beta 53G account, twenty-two hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-three cents, motion?
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have, uh, Monis and Latimer Constable, um, we have four different ones, uh, one at sixty, three at eighty, um, so that's a total of, let's see, uh, uh, three hundred dollars, is there a motion to, uh, pay Monis and Latimer, uh, uh, constables?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have, uh, Nova Environmental Consulting for two hundred and fifty dollars, Strawberry Fields Appeal, that's what that one was for.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Gay and Gay, um, for Forest Hills, uh, for fifteen hundred twenty dollars.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see, another one, Strawberry Fields, uh, that's, I assume that's Gay and Gay as well?
Yes, these appear to all be to the same-
Okay, so for, there's two additional ones for a total of eight hundred dollars.
So moved.
Uh, seconded?
Sec.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, officially, they have been voted upon and, uh, alright, uh, next, uh-
Can we take this out of order, four eighteen Hart Street?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion to take four eighteen Hart Street out of order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, four eighteen Hart Street, uh, map twenty, lot ninety-five.
Yes, I already hired an engineer to take care of the stuff for me, okay?
Okay.
I hired a engineer to take care of it, and he hired a wetland scientist to flag it, oh, yeah, still there.
He's right, he's right, yeah, sorry.
So, um, um, Mr. Lima hired Stephen Shamil to flag the wetlands, he, I talked to Stephen today more about it, and, and he explained to me that it's an isolated vegetated wetland, it does not meet the requirements of an ILSF under the Wetland Protection Act, so it would only be filing under the town bylaw, so I have that, I'll be submitting that on Monday.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so it'll be on for the mock.
So you're going to submit a notice of intent?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's a hold on the building permit right now, and so they've been responsive, and we did issue an enforcement order, which, um, you need to ratify, but, so you do need to vote on that, but we can, I, it's good, things are going to move forward in the right direction, you're going to have to move stuff around, because there's a fifty-foot no bill.
We've moved, I've moved the house to the left to, to maintain more than fifty feet, septic doesn't have to move, that's more than a hundred feet away, the driveway will move a little bit, too.
Okay, so we'll be getting that as a filing at the next meeting, so it'll come-
Alright, so I think we're all set then, now I know why you call Estevire Steve.
Thank you, thank you, drive safe.
Thank you.
Okay.
His wife's a nurse and he needs to go take care of the kids.
Okay, uh, let's go, we're going to go back to the agenda, uh, Lisa, these are your, uh, commission, um, updates.
Yeah.
Twenty-three seventy-one County Street.
Right, we have, um, Mr. De Souza here from North County Group, has been retained for, um, Mr. Enos, and I believe he does have an attorney, a new attorney now, two, and they're both here, um-
Hi, Mr. De Souza.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
How are you? How you doing? Long time no see.
Well, a few months.
Not too bad, so, um, just to let everybody know that I have been retained by, uh, Mr. Enos, uh, we are currently right now, um, going through and resolving the property line boundaries out there, uh, we will be doing the, uh, the topographic survey in the next coming weeks, uh, we will be flagging the wetland areas or resource areas out there, we're also going to be looking to see why the impoundment of water is there, uh, it looks like we have found that, that some of the impoundment is due to a blockage in the old railroad bed that is downstream from there, so, uh, I believe right now, just preliminarily, that, that an, uh, blockage is impounding that whole area. So, uh, I believe right now, just preliminarily, that, that an, uh, blockage is impounding that whole area. But, we'll get into that when, uh, the time comes at that point, but I just wanna lay out a, uh, timeline for you guys. So, by the end of March, we'll have the property line all set, we'll have the, uh, the topographic information all set, we'll have the wetlands almost all flagged out, and then I would like to meet with Lisa probably in early April, because I have, I gotta go to out of state, uh, in March for a couple of times for the military. Uh, so I'll be gone almost, uh, uh, two weeks on that point, but I would like to meet with Lisa, uh, early April, and maybe one of the other, uh, members of, of the board, just to kinda go over what we found and, uh, start a plan and motion to, uh, to get everything hopefully resolved and everybody in the same, uh, consensus, so we can move forward.
Okay, sounds, sounds like we're finally heading somewhere after two years.
So, that's.
Or is it more than two years? Long time.
I'm trying to be positive.
So, with all the work you're doing?
Yes.
That doesn't get to the problems that are here and now? Are you, are you trying to search for an answer as why the water's there?
Well, no, well, searching for an answer for the water is there is one small portion of the equation.
I don't think that that should be the first thing at hand.
It's not.
Besides fixing the violations that's taking place.
Exactly, so, we're gonna look at exactly what the violations are, but we can't do that until the resource areas are actually flagged. Once we flag the, uh, resource areas, then we know exactly the extent of any, in violations that exist.
So, you're flagging the remaining resource areas, because you can't put an ogre through that?
No, I know that, well, the only, the only.
You can't, you wanna put an ogre through?
Yeah, no.
Twenty-five feet.
Or more.
The, well.
Go ahead.
We need to hold on on that basis still, because you gotta understand that that is a railroad bed, and we also are looking into whether or not the railroad still has some fee interest in that property, because if the railroad has.
Fee interest.
Yeah, so if the railroad has a fee interest on that bed, they can come back and overtake that bed and, uh, reactivate it. Listen, I'm, I've dealt with railroad beds for a very long time, I've dealt with many railroad companies. There's always a fee interest, until you have a signed letter from the state of Massachusetts releasing the fee interest from the railroad, it goes to the state, and from the state, it goes to the individual or the other entities. Without that key piece from the state, there's still a fee interest.
I think the next door neighbor has already received that, and that's why he did what he did.
Maybe, maybe, maybe not, because I couldn't find his either. Just letting you know.
Okay.
But, that's a, another topic for another conversation for another day. But right now, is, we need to find out exactly the resource area, the extent that is still out there, and then, once we get that, we're gonna outline some plans, and then we're gonna go from there.
Can we work on getting the trash out?
That will come at the time of the mitigation plan.
Okay.
We can't do that, I don't wanna do that right now, because any further, uh, disturbance to the property is not gonna validate the resource area.
Okay.
That's it, I'll explain it in some.
So, you will not be at the next meeting, correct?
I will not, because I will actually be out of state on, uh, March, uh, twenty-first?
Twenty-first, yes, sir.
So, if you're not, if you're claiming that you're potentially not in a resource area, there are still violations pending, the illegal dumping of some of the debris that went in that hole is illegal to dump.
Wait, wait, even, wait, even if it's an isolated wetland, it's a resource area?
Yes, but even if he tries to say that it's not, there is still illegal dumping that is taking place.
Well, let's cross that bridge when we get to it, I mean, right now, I'm just laying out.
Okay.
A schematic for a, a timeline.
And I'm just seeing some of how.
We're good with that, it's.
No, that's fine.
This is the first, uh, um, positive direction that we've been in, in over two years.
Right, so, that's all, that's all I'm here, I just wanna update the commission, let you guys know exactly what's going on, and then, you know, work with Lisa, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
And, uh, early April, I would like to have a meeting with Lisa, and maybe one or two members of the board.
Do you wanna set a date now?
Actually, we, we can.
Okay. Let's do that.
So, your April hearing is eighteenth?
Correct.
Correct.
So, we're on the eighteenth, so if we could meet on April third.
Okay.
Okay.
As long as you don't say April fools.
Nope.
April third, um, yeah, do you wanna say nine-thirty?
Yeah, that's, that works.
Works for me.
At nine-thirty AM. Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, I thank you very much, and have a, have a good night.
Thank you, nice to see you.
You too, good to see you.
This is satisfying. Hi, good evening, Attorney John Zajac, also here for Mr. Enos. Um, having read the previous notes from the meetings that before, uh, Mr. De Souza and I were, were on the team, I just wanted to confirm that this has satisfied the commission that the fines will now cease because he has hired an engineer and, uh, is moving forward.
I'm sorry, you are attorney?
Attorney John Zajac.
Zajac?
Zajac, Z-A-J-A-C.
In my opinion, my.
Certainly.
In, in my opinion, the role of Conservation Commission issuing fines is, in my opinion, the last resort. It's when we've exhausted all other options, and we, um, do not have someone who's willing to work with us, I believe that the presence of both of you here tonight, and the presence of Mr. De Souza entertaining you, um, I think that that's a significant positive step forward, and, um, if you'd be willing to entertain a motion, I would, I would be amenable to, uh.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, uh, just change what you said a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, please.
And, and my thoughts were, when we get a plan, we could suspend additional fining. I do not wanna remove the fines that have already been issued, uh, uh, this has been an awful long time, um, I felt as though, uh, people on this commission have taken abuse from time to time, and, uh, I'm not willing to give up on it that easily. My thoughts are, when we get a plan in hand, we can suspend any additional fines, but make those fines already issued payable. Now, you can think about what I said and, uh, go from there.
The, the speech was worded as a plan to resolve the issues. You have chosen, from my interpretation, is to argue the facts of the wetland. Is that how I perceived your speech tonight?
No, so the plan is to show the, what we feel are resource areas, confer with you prior to the hearing, to validate the resource areas, and then work out a mitigation at that point.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay.
That's how it always operates.
Yep, same way, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna put together a plan and say, hey, here you go, this is it, eat it, no. It's, you're gonna re- review it, you're gonna see it, you know, there's give and take on both parties, everybody knows this, everybody has to come to an agree, agreeable plan, so I'm gonna present to you what I feel, you're gonna give me your feelings, and we're gonna hash out a plan that works for everybody.
Including plan notes and everything.
Exactly.
Okay.
And a timeline for implementation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we do think that, you know, having a, having feedback, having a dialogue is important at this point, we're trying to, you know, measure twice and cut once, so.
How long have you been on board?
Uh, about a week, a little over a week.
Okay, then, you are, you need a lot of updating.
I probably do.
Still moving in the right direction now.
Yes, I will agree, we're moving in the right direction.
I do concur with Dave. I'd like the, the thoughts of, of, of Jack and Jim as well, I, I feel like this is a significant step, I feel like this is a lot more forward progress than we've had in a long time on this filing, and, um, I do think it's worth considering a pause to the, you know, the fines could always be reinstated if for some reason this wasn't to move forward.
Alright, so, that's what we can say tonight, if we do not receive a plan by what date? You wanna give them to?
When did you feel like you would be delineated?
So, April third, we'll have the plan for the meeting with Lisa and a couple of members of the board.
Okay.
Okay, so, on April third, there'll be that plan. After the April third hearing, we hope to have some rehashing, and I'll get a revised plan in about a week before, uh, to the commission, so that way at least the commission will have it about a week prior to the next hearing.
Please.
That will be on for the eighteenth.
Okay.
So, that's why I kinda chose the April third, so it kinda gives you about two weeks.
Yeah.
One week to, for me to do what I need to do, another week for you guys just to visually see it.
Now, may I ask, just to confirm, you said it was by April third, we would be in receipt of a plan?
Yeah, with Lisa, with Lisa and, uh, two members go over what we feel are resource areas, and then start hashing out what you guys feel are resource areas, and then come up with a combined, uh, consensus, and then on the eighteenth, at least have a good working plan to show the commission that we can go more forward from that point onward.
Would it be permissible, um, if we were to propose a motion to pause fines beginning today, subject to satisfactory receipt of a plan by the Conservation Agent not later than April third? Would, would that be a reasonable?
I would say.
Would that be reasonably palatable to the commission?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, uh, Jack?
Yeah.
Okay, then, so, but I do not wanna, fines are already put into place, I want them taken care of, I'm not, I don't wanna rescind them.
Nope, that, that's absent from my motions, Jim.
I, no, no, but I just wanna make it clear on that, okay, ma- make a motion, I like your word, pause.
Uh, I'd like to propose a motion to pause fines, uh, with an effective date of today, uh, February twenty-ninth, subject to receipt by the Conservation Agent of a satisfactory plan not later than April third?
So moved.
Well, the April third plan is the first plan that we're gonna sit down and go over, it's a review plan on April third.
That was, okay, so a review plan.
And then, a review plan on April third, yes.
Received not later than April third.
Yeah.
Okay, a motion made and seconded.
And I need a paper copy, not just electronic.
Oh, no, there'll be the large copy, unless you want eight and a half by eleven?
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
Second.
Oh, I thought you already did.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you gotta pause until the, so if you don't come in the third with it, uh, they resume.
Okay.
Are you all set?
Yes.
And, um, Maureen is, um, the new clerk, she, she's located across the hall from me, she's not in my office, just so you know.
If you need anything, email me.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. De Souza, we appreciate your presence as well, sir.
Thank you all very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care, drive careful.
Okay, Lisa, you have ten thirty-five Williams Street?
Okay, yeah, um, we don't have any, um, there's no new status on this. Um, trying to figure out if maybe I should consider recording the enforcement order against the property.
Uh, make sure that that is legal for our commission to do.
Yeah, I think it's legal, but, yeah, I'm gonna look into it a little bit further. I know some, some towns do and some towns don't, so. Well, I don't know that it would, yeah, it would have to be satisfied, I know we've done it in the past, like, we did it on Smith Street, because it keeps coming back at us on that lot, um, as far as people, I guess that's one of the lots the town sold, people purchasing it, see it, so.
Okay, I think we just gotta make sure on that, because somewhere I heard that, uh, that was impossible, but then again, that's my recollection.
Okay, we'd have to eat the, eat the cost of recording it.
Uh, yeah, but, well, I, I don't think it's all that much, but, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim and I, we can talk about it a little more.
Fourteen twenty Williams Street.
There's no new update on that, um, right now.
Okay, uh, ten thirty-three Oak Street?
They, they did, I know they do have someone working on the remediation and dredging of the pond, um, ten thirty-three Oak, I believe he's here. Is he here, no?
No.
Oh, okay, um, so I do have, I've been in communications with Mr. Watson, um, Evan Watson is an engineer that has been retained by.
Seth.
Mr. Cook. Um, so you stepping down? Okay. So, I did tell, Evan, Evan did tell me that he's working on, um, researching to see what may have been filed in the past for the property.
Yeah.
And I told him the commission would like to see something at, by their next meeting, and, um, so I don't know if he's gonna have, I don't think he's gonna have a notice of intent like we want by the next meeting, but, we need.
Well, it's still four weeks away, are there, close to it, three weeks?
Yeah, but, we need to get it in for the legal notice, next week.
Um, alright, one Myra Saline?
I'll follow up with him again, um. Oh, so I do have an update on that, I was able to speak with Natural Heritage today, um, she was.
On Myra Saline's side, okay.
She was gonna send us an email, and I know she probably will next week, but, um, what she recommended was, of course, native species be replaced because of the tree cutting. Um, she said she didn't recall a lot of understory in there, so if we wanted to just require a couple of shrubs that provide good wildlife habitat, we can do that, it's really up to us, um, but she did say we should consider the watering and consider the deer browse. Um, she suggested the deer protection tubes, but in my experience in the past, those don't really do good, because they kinda, I feel like they, they cause damage to the trees. I like the garlic sticks, so, I'm gonna recommend that, um.
What if we just put something that's native that the deer?
Yeah, I mean, that too, so we can talk.
Some native blueberry back there, deer eat the blueberry, don't touch it.
I think she oughta put American chestnut trees out there.
Well, they could, that's actually a good thought, but, um, but anyway, I mean, that's a good soil for that there, um.
Was her question about the understory, why it was non-existent?
Did she have a question about it? No, she didn't, she just said it was, um, kinda sparse, and she just assumed, she didn't have any real reasoning for it.
When we went out there, it looked like it was non-existent.
Yeah, I wonder why?
I wondered why, too.
And then watering, I don't think watering will be a real issue, because the house is, it's not like it's hundreds of feet away from the house.
Yeah, it's only a fifty-foot walk with a, with a bucket of washwater.
Yeah, I mean, um.
You can pump a septic out there, Jim.
She did tell me about these new, I don't know what they're called, but they're, they're donut-like, you could have, require them to put around the trees, they just kinda drip, and then you could also require, like, drip lines of hoses, which is, sounds like a.
Well, I think making too big a deal out of it.
No, but in the future, for things like restoration, big restoration plans, I just wanted to throw that out there, so you could.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Um, but that's it, I mean, um, once she sends the. But that's it, I mean, once she sends the email, I think what I'll do is, well, Maureen or I will forward it to the homeowner. And whether it be through email and mail, and then we'll tell them to come in at the next meeting and tell us what species. We'll work with them on the species, maybe Jason has some other ideas besides.
Okay, twenty ninety-seven Wheeler?
Um, nothing new, they're supposed to be filing for the shed they want. They have a building permit application in for a shed. They will need mitigation, but I do know he did have the site flagged, so. I'm assuming he's going to want a shed soon considering it's coming out of winter.
Okay, he was one that was here and didn't want a lawyer, and now he's talking lawyer, okay. Thirteen thirty-four Tremont Street? Okay, all right. Wow, we're emptying out. Yeah, this is a long night.
How are you? Good, good, getting there, getting there.
Yeah, so we, and since we seen.
You're the new house builder.
Yes, the one you recommended the stump grindings to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see you had some dump in there.
Yeah.
Put them around.
Okay.
So since the last meeting, we have, had not received any photos until yesterday, even though we asked for weekly photos. And I did, I drafted and sent an enforcement order to Mr. Oliver and the, and the owner.
Because you're the.
Photos were sent previously. I don't know if it was the size of them. I reduced the photos that went yesterday in size. But I could take the original email and follow you copies of the photos. Photos were sent twice previously.
Yeah, just to document it, if you have the emails and can screenshot it, copy it with the dates.
Yep, so what I did was I reduced them to their, you have an option, and it's, don't keep them to the original size. So I did that. And they were just basic photos, nothing new has changed on the areas on the left side of the property since. So for the first three times I took photos originally, and then the two that I had sent, everything looked the same. They looked like identical photos.
Yeah, but.
Essentially identical, not identical.
Of course they will, but what?
Different sun and background, different shadows, you'll be able to see that.
Now, how did everything weather when this passed rain? We had one point two inches by yesterday morning, and then last night we had another point three.
So I went by yesterday, it looked okay, there was.
No, were you there today after the rain?
Went by today, I didn't see sediment on the right-hand side of the driveway at all on the ground. Everything that, that material, putting that out in front of the silt fence looked like it, you know, serving its purpose and it's working.
So, so, all right, so things seems to be functioning well then.
I didn't go by today.
No, I didn't either.
Prior to the fence that went up recently, I couldn't get it in the ground. The ground froze right after the civil engineer was able to go out there and do his final as-built. I couldn't backfill it immediately from when the border health said it was okay. I had to wait for the civil engineer to go out, do the as-built, then we were able to do it. By that time, we've had ice and we've had snow since then, so.
I've been able to get in the ground.
Excuse me?
I've been able to dig in the ground.
Out there in front of the property was filled with stone and all the water coming down, it was locked inside all the stone.
Just grabbing and he's pushed the frost in, Lisa.
Yeah.
No, I mean, he's been on top of it.
Yeah.
I think a lot of it has to do with the moisture up on top of the surface of it as well, you know, not draining and stuff, the top of the ground is hard. If I went in my backyard and stuck a stake in the grass, that's a different story.
Another three months, you'll have warm water and it'll be growing grass.
Uh, hopefully sooner than that.
Uh, let's see, February, March, April, May, oh, yeah, the end, the end of, the end of April, you'll probably be planting. Okay, any questions, do you have anything else, Lisa?
Yeah, we have the enforcement orders here.
So, main, main thing for the enforcement orders to document on the Vernal Pool and the neighbor is, wants to make sure that those species do return. So I think if we issue the enforcement orders so that we can monitor them and stay on top of the Vernal Pool. And then come spring, if the species come back and the site stabilized and we look at the Vernal Pool, we look at the enforcement.
Okay, I driven by, I haven't stopped at the Vernal Pool themselves to look at it. What would have?
May I ask a question about that?
Any species that are there, only the, the frogs are going to be in, in the mud and the leaves, right?
It would be dissolved oxygen from the dirt, from the sediment.
But is there sediment in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, do you want to see the photos?
No, there's sediment, I've seen it, I saw it on the surface of the water previously.
And then as the rain, as it settles, it covered the.
The leaves?
My only concern or question would be, is if you look at the, the road for seven hundred feet towards Williams and then back, you know, a hundred and fifty towards miles, the entire road pitches in that direction. Every aspect of that road from the crest of the crown of the road, all goes right down to that general area. What other things might cause the species to not be there? Do we have to worry about, you know, road salt and things like that, the road salts affect it?
Oh, because Mr. Ferry doesn't use any.
He doesn't, okay.
No.
So that was some of the concerns I had, just regular traffic going by, things coming off.
Yeah, well, I would assume.
You know, I don't know what was there before, nothing was documented before. We don't know what there was for a species, so to say, you know, looking for something to come back, what are we going to be looking for?
I would assume if, if, if some of them, some of the species diminished in number, that they're, they're all going to make a comeback.
So the, the owner of the property has documented and probably has videos or something, but he has information on it.
Can we get that and see that, or?
Yeah, I mean, we should.
Jeff, if it gets presented at a public meeting, it'll become part of the public record.
So if it goes to enforcement completely, he'll have to present his side, we'll have to get a scientist to prove that they're not there.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully they do come back.
I don't see why they're not going to, I mean.
You know, I mean, there's still a good pathway to the woods in the back. Am I correct? You've got a good, for, for any of those creatures that migrate.
It's on the road.
I know, it's right in the front of the house.
Neighbor's house.
Yes, there's a vegetated corridor between the two properties.
But I'm saying there is a corridor that goes in the back between the two houses, the new house.
But we're talking about if they're going to get suffocated by all the sediment. If they, if they drowned, it doesn't matter what corridor they got. That's the only thing.
Yeah.
But if, if it goes well.
And then how do we deem that it is a, a Vernal Pool? How do you deem that it is one hundred percent? Only reason I ask was, so after the first time this was brought to my attention, and then we had a short span of non-rain and things like that, the water level dropped there drastically, and that's, you know, I was able to see the inside of it.
Oh, I see, I see the silt here.
Yeah.
So Lisa, how would we?
How do you do that? How do you go about?
Without, would we have to have it delineated? The owner have to have it delineated to fight, to prove that it's a Vernal Pool, or is it on air?
No, it doesn't need to be delineated. I mean, Mr. Ferry actually has told me, he, everybody knows that's a Vernal Pool, that's what he told me, so.
Okay, so.
He may have.
Where would we stand on documenting that? Documentation on that?
Okay, so.
Well, it's not his property, so any documents I would think would come from the neighbor.
So you're saying that we need to issue an enforcement order so that?
So this doesn't drop off the radar, pretty much, because you're about to be done with the project, right? And you're about to sell the project.
Correct.
So that's, that's why.
Yeah, I, I do think a little bit of perpetuity and awareness on this is probably going to be a good thing.
I mean, do we want to put it on the new owner? I don't think so, that wouldn't really be fair. You know, I don't think.
Well, the new owner, I don't want to put it on them, but at the same time, they're going to have to also maintain the property after.
Yeah.
They're going to have to make sure that the lawn is watered, it's not dried out, you know, things aren't continuing to run off.
Right, so we want to make sure the initial growing season, you've stabilized the site.
I have a feeling that I'm going to be gone even before that initial growing season. I will plant the, you know, the seed and do all that, and there is going to be a, a holdback at the closing for the final landscaping. But my intent is to be out of there in another three, four weeks the most.
I, I think that this is, this is good in the sense that, you know, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. And by recording this, there won't be any confusion, right? There won't be any, you know, I, I didn't know.
Okay, so who, who's getting?
Do you care if you give it another, if you give it another month to the next meeting and then consider?
Well, there's two copies, ones for each.
So do we need to further look into when we have, we would be able to document a failure if one is accorded?
I, I think we'll know in April, right, guys, I mean, that's.
That's what I'm asking you, science, science-wise.
We'll know in April. I mean, we should know, we definitely should know by the end of May, right?
Yeah, by, by April, the frogs are going to be gone.
I want to be closed and gone.
We might know in the next couple of weeks.
How do you?
You hear them, you got to go out there at night. You have a camera? Does it, I saw you had a camera taking pictures. Is it a, do you have like a?
What do you mean, like in my pocket or in the, on the property?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, video camera.
There's a, there's a security camera on the property.
So do you have one that does noise?
Doesn't do sound.
So you're looking for peepers?
Yeah.
He's got to have a bucket out there.
Get in there, get in there. I think I'd have to know what a peeper was first, I understand it's a frog, but I couldn't tell you what it looks like.
That's the honest truth.
I hear them, but I can't tell you I've ever actually seen one.
In the spring and early summer, there, I'll be mowing the lawn and I have to dodge and go around them sometimes because they're coming from the Vernal Pools a thousand feet away from me. You know, they, and you look on the tree and they'll be climbing up trees and.
The tree frogs, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion then to issue enforcement orders to both J Cubed? And, wait a minute, and Jason Oliver?
So moved.
So the question was the timeline.
So the timeline isn't going to hold up closing or anything, is it?
It'll just be attached to the property.
That's what I'm saying, it has to, the closing is scheduled for, I think it was the twenty-third of March.
Okay.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to necessarily have to record it. I'm hoping that we can just deal with it in the next couple of months and you will cooperate. I don't.
I have not, not cooperated since I've done.
We don't want to hold you up, but we need to assure that if and when we have something to hold on to to cover conservation resource area that has been affected. And then if we go after the, the new owner, they're going to be like, hey buddy, they're going to make you look bad.
Yeah.
Everybody's going to look bad.
Right.
So, how can we?
We can always record it at a later date.
I would prefer if you could do that, keep it on hand and then record it at a later date, after you see that there may be an issue or something going on.
Yeah.
I have no place to go, I'm, you know, local in the community, I don't do this for a living, I'm not one of these fly-by-night builders going in and out and, you know. This was.
So may I ask this? Would you be willing to take responsibility when and if this occurs to this resource area? Would you be willing to step up and take this even though the damage was done to somebody else's property?
I don't think, I don't, I don't think we would have any mechanism to enforce something like that.
Yeah, and, and not understanding what that pertains, I wouldn't, I don't know what to.
Who's going to accept responsibility when and if, when you're gone?
You know, I, I don't see it, I really don't see a problem coming up.
What, what does that entail? And what are we, you know?
I know there was silt in the water.
I'm just asking to.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I could say yes to you right now and then come to find out that that cost me a million dollars, and I have no idea what I'm getting myself into. I, I can't, I can't say that, I don't even know what I'm up against, I don't even know what's there for a species.
Okay. So who's going to take acceptance of this? He sells, are we going after the homeowner?
We've got both, we've got the seller here, the landowner, and we have the contractor.
So the landowner, when, when he signs off, is going to have to tell the people?
He's right here.
You're going to have to tell the people that you are responsible.
He, he is not.
You and I are J Cube partners.
Oh, got it.
So I'm, I'm not looking to just force trouble on somebody, someone has to take accountability.
What has to be done to that?
First of all, Jason, you keep putting this back, you got to go back before this all started. Is there documentation before this all started?
Uh, that it's a Vernal Pool?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's a Vernal Pool, but what did it consist of, Lisa? This guy, this guy's willing to step up to do what he can do and he's been doing what he's doing.
And the other thing is.
I mean, you know, if, if there's damage, we got to fix it, but there's been a lot of damage.
As long as we write it up in a way that someone has coverage.
Well, that's what we got there, and it'll carry through.
The only issue that I see is I don't even know what that means in, you know, to, to clean it and.
As long as it's got obligate species coming back. So what it would be is mating wood frogs or some, if we see some egg masses in there, that's all we need, and we, we see your site stable and the sediment isn't getting worse.
As soon as that grass is planted, there's not going to be any sediment whatsoever going, there's just not going to be sediment.
Right, so we, we could sign tonight and not necessarily record it, and it's better to have and not need than need and not have, right?
Okay, so you made the motion already, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay, so you will both get enforcement orders, but.
Well, they already got them.
Oh, they already, okay, so this is just.
I was going to be here anyway, but that was just an extra bonus.
Okay, then send them back.
Firestarter?
Okay, so, and again, when I, I truly think that there's not going to be any trouble. I know there's silt, I saw the silt in the water, you know, how thick, I mean, it's going to be.
It looked like it was on the surface of the leaves, looking at the edge of the embankment, it was on the surfaces of it.
I mean, that's what I envisioned, and anything that's underneath there is, is going to wiggle around and, and they're going to be on top of it in no time. And as soon as it warms up, you're going to, you're going to hear them croaking, those frogs.
We hope. I mean, I would never would have issued it if I thought that was, I think there was a chance that they might.
A chance, but I, yeah, there's, there's, but I think it's slight, and, and I think this might be also to to say that we're doing something and you're doing something to alleviate the neighbor's fears.
And like I said, none of this would have ever happened if there was known wetlands there. I'm not out to do this with any intent, I'm not trying to ruin anything.
Over here, David.
It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, wasn't aware of it.
If we were aware of it, we would have taken action immediately. I've been going by there for fifty years and I didn't know there was a Vernal Pool there.
That's because it's protected by some trees.
That's right, that's right. I'm serious when I say I've been going by there for fifty years.
Surrounded by asphalt on all sides.
Yeah, I mean, it's sitting with the road on one side and the horseshoe driveway on the other side.
Everything on the driveway drains in, everything on the road drains in.
It's still a driveway.
Yeah, I know. I didn't, honestly, Jack, I didn't know it was there either.
No, neither did I, I've lived in this town for a long time.
Ah, that's Jason.
Yep, so he's just got to print, he's just got to print afterwards when you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, I, I think we're all set then for tonight.
I think now, going forward for the next few weeks, just make sure you're watching the erosion controls and you're making sure there's no silt running down.
I've been keeping up with it, it's been knocked down by the plows going down the street, it's been laid over, frozen on top of, people have driven over and put it back up. I've added more stone to the outside of the original side, I took the recommendations of putting the, you know, the.
Just put the chips right along.
You have eight feet of chips out there currently, around the perimeter, right up along the edge of the road.
That's what you want.
Yeah, did exactly what you guys had asked.
It's, it's a, it's a deal the state of New Hampshire uses.
Was it you that was telling me last night?
I used to work for Lidge and Clearer.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we stabilized hundreds of miles of pipeline, power lines, all of that, and we used stump chips.
I tell you, it's a challenge to find it though, in the middle of winter when everybody's gotten rid of it already. It came out of, it came out of Bridgewater and I had to have somebody out of Plymouth come and truck it for us. I mean, I'm not putting effort into it, I'm.
Yeah, no, no, I under, I, I look at you as being genuine.
Trying.
Your expected closing date's the twenty-third, is that right?
That's the intention, yep.
And our meeting is the twenty-first, and we don't necessarily have to record this, we can keep it an ongoing dialogue.
Right.
If it ends up recording it wasn't necessary, then we're going to know that in advance of the closing date.
I'm fine with that.
You need to get out there with your microphone.
There'll be a microphone, I'll be out there. There'll be a microphone, I'll be out there breeding frogs.
Come on, go.
Those African frogs don't count.
Oh, just gotta get a...
Do you have Kermit's email?
I'm sorry, Kermit's email? I'm sorry, I can't hear you from over there.
Okay, all right, shall we move on?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. There's one more, but...
Yeah, 2470 Pleasant Street.
Correct.
Go ahead.
So map 20 lot, sorry, I, this is the first time it's on the agenda, so. Map 20 lot 55, previous filling made on a wet, to wetland on the property. I recommended hiring a surveyor, removing the fill and allowing the wetlands to go back. We asked the owner to attend the meeting in a letter. I also had spoken with him and was under the impression he was gonna come to the meeting. So I'll have to follow up. This is a site adjacent to 2371 County, down gradient. So heading towards Hart Street.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I think we're all set. Is there...
I have, I know I'm not on the docket, but I have...
Public input.
I have some, I have some questions for some issues that are going on next door to my property.
Okay, and, okay, over here, please.
Come over here.
What's your address?
It's 2685 Horton Street, North Dayton, Mass.
Okay, my address is 2685 Horton Street, North Dayton, Mass. My name's John Buffington. There is, a gentleman has come in and you guys are aware that he's come in and he put in a driveway. But it's, I just had my property resurveyed and he's about a quarter of the way on my property and has taken all the trees out. So I'm just asking basically for information, what is my request? He's already screwed up the wetlands.
Oh, wait a minute.
This, all of this, all of this wetlands with this driveway.
2685, sir?
2685.
He's 2685.
Is this the banker?
I'm 2685.
Is this the banker?
No, this is the contractor from Swansea.
No, 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 with, you said driveway was...
He said no, it isn't, Jim.
Okay, all right.
No, it's not, no, it's got...
Oh, it's, okay, no, I just want, I don't know, I can't, I can't picture where 2685 is.
Roy Horton's house.
Well, wait, wait, wait a minute.
That's 2685, the next lot to it.
Is it, is it beyond Oak Street?
Jim, it's the violation on Horton down by the, down by the church. Why isn't it...
Oh, oh, all right, by the church, okay, all right.
You know where it is now?
Now, now I know, by the church, okay.
Anyway, so there's all this, there's a lot of damage in there and...
We know.
I know you know, but it's on my property now.
Okay, now that we know that, we can...
Wait a minute.
Can, we can enforce...
Wait a minute. Zenith Consulting Engineers and Surveyors is working for the gentleman that owns the property.
He's flagged my property.
The wetland scientist has flagged the wetlands. Zenith did a, is doing a survey and that should come in the, come out in the survey that they're off property. This was supposed to be on the agenda, so I'm gonna add it under public input. Let me give you everybody an update on this one. Zero Horton, Olivera hired Steven Schmeele and Zenith. We have paused the fines, so now they were going to be here. They actually submitted a draft restoration plan to me over a month ago. I started reviewing it and I provided them some comments. The engineer just got back from vacation today and I believe they're implementing the, the changes that I asked them to make.
I realize that you have been there, but do you realize the damage that's been done?
Yes, extensive.
They have taken the stone wall that holds the road up, out.
Right.
Do we have any stone wall rules in Dayton?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
How, how about, there's a member of the zoning board about six inches to your right.
Do we have stone wall rules in Dayton?
Is there? It's on, right on the road. I mean, the road, that's hold the road up. I mean, it's just, but I'm just asking for myself because what he's done is he's put that driveway in and cut down all the trees.
I know.
Pushed the trees on, onto my property.
We've all seen it, right?
Part of the restoration problem, part of the restoration, we can make him replant trees, but...
Extensive.
Somehow we gotta get you involved to be satisfied.
I'd be satisfied just to get the stuff out of there because it's affecting the skunk cabbage.
Well, you know what? We didn't want him to pull it out during, not in the growing season. So if we made them pull it out in the winter, it would've been a bigger disaster. So the goal is to get it done this spring and according to the wetland scientist, yes. So next month, come to our meeting and they're gonna present the plan.
Okay.
All right, but in the meantime, do you want the engineer's number so you can tell him that he's on your property?
That would probably be a good idea, huh?
Yeah.
I just had it redone, I just had it resurveyed. And he, when he moved, when he came in, I said, be very careful what you do. I said, make sure you have oil permits because this street is, everybody's up and down this street all the time. He said, okay, I'll get all the permits. So I had an old copy of, of my surveyed property and I gave it to him. And I said, this is your line, this is where I am. That's not how it went.
Zenith.
Under, under state law, you can estimate the trees and you can get three times their value.
I have, luckily I have pictures before he...
Well, no, but I mean, you're, you're entitled under state law. You can collect three times the value of the timber or the trees that he removed.
Because there's no way to replace a 75-foot tall, 60-foot tall tree.
Yeah, it's just, it's in the, it's in the cotton laws, the harvest...
How about the ones they kill in the meantime? I have a huge tree that used to be...
Document as much as you can.
I will, I have all the pictures.
Okay, Bob, you have a question?
Um, I know that stuff well. I've been all the way down the end of that driveway, if you guys don't mind me saying. That's all ground up top. So that oil from that top is going, he's right, that's all going into that wetland every time it rains because it was ground up from 44. So all that oil is going all over that wetlands. So when he's saying that this stuff is dying 30 feet out, it's because of that oil.
And I'm just, I, you know, I've lived there for 30 years and we know there's wetlands around and we took, it's all pasture for sheep and we took care of the wetlands and whatnot. And now when he came in, the water's backing up onto my side because he only, he put a culvert in way down.
Can you take a drive?
Yeah, it wasn't, but he, but he put a culvert in down there so that eliminates some of the water, but not nearly enough.
Cause there's a stream.
So it's just, it's just a mess and it's, you know, and...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna drive by tomorrow.
And I didn't, I, I don't wanna cause the guy any trouble, but I don't wanna...
Why not, if he's done damage?
Well, he's done damage, but I don't wanna be a hard ass about it, excuse my friend, but I just, you know, I...
At some points, you have to be.
I know, but it's just not my, it's not my style.
Just a chip, I mean, selectmen's input.
What really aggravating me is the fact that he had the plan, he had the plan in his hand that showed the property lines and I had to go out and spend my money, again, to get it resurveyed.
Okay.
I'm sorry to hear this, my heart breaks for you, that's a shame. I hope it gets made right and...
I don't know how he's ever gonna make it right, it's gonna cost him thousands of dollars.
Lenny, you have a comment or...
Three things. For the record, Leonard Hall, Dayton Board of Selectmen. On the first issue regarding Marty and her engineering firm, is my understanding that Weston and Sampson could farm out work to her if they can't get to any of your projects in a timely fashion, but that would be their choice. Secondly, it was my understanding that in an emergency, you needed an engineer in an emergency, you could turn the mic. As far as meeting with the Board of Selectmen, you can request that, but it might be easier and streamline it for your meeting so you don't all have to come to a Board of Selectmen meeting. As a member of Conl, Lisa met with Mike Mullen. Mike negotiated the contract with Weston and Sampson. He would know better than the three of us what the terms are, what your team can't do. And then all it would take would be a memo to the Board of Selectmen and to all of you.
Thank you.
What is correct.
That's great. Okay, all right, all right, I thought you were going to respond.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to go.
Oh, you snuck in there.
No, I'm sorry, I ain't...
No, that's fine, no, it's fine.
Okay, all right, so...
What's your name?
John Buffington.
Okay.
John, I have the contact number for Zenith.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be Niles, you're gonna reach out to Niles. Yeah.
Okay, all right, so you're gonna call them and you're gonna, and then you're gonna ask for special services when they put in their plan what they're gonna do on your side of the property?
How about this? We're gonna ask Zenith to share the plans and he's gonna be a part of it. He's gonna be a part of the restoration. He has to be.
How's that sound?
Sounds all right.
Can I say one more thing?
Maybe. Go ahead.
He's been on the property.
I've been on the property. Steve asked me to look at it and give him a quote to take the stuff out of there. I would suggest to the board, knowing what I know and seeing the oil that I saw, to immediately get some erosion control down both sides of that.
How about even removing it?
But you got an eight-foot drop at the road that's full of that stuff.
Yeah, you got 600 feet of fill all the way down to the electric line. So you should put 600 feet of barrier on both sides of that so that oil stops going into...
Do we put a barrier or do we have the contamination removed?
Well, we're gonna need a barrier before they stop digging in it. And I do know one other item is that apparently the owner is considering doing the work himself.
He's a contractor.
I know, but this is the problem I'm gonna have. If he does the work himself, we're not gonna have anyone monitoring it because you know it's gonna be after hours and on the weekend and I'm not going for that.
Nope, timeline.
Just letting you know ahead of time, that's, that's it.
Then in, then with, on the approval, it must, we would have, it must be during regular hours, Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
Yes.
That would, okay, no, that's a, that's a thought that would, would require it not to be him. We can't say it can't be him.
And we have a licensed expert.
Or a licensed contractor, right? I mean, that grade, that's really dangerous. I don't even know if the building inspector or whoever's supposed to be enforcing that stuff would want someone in there with a machine right next to the, how the roads...
The road is, they, they took, they literally took the rocks from the side of the road and put it into the driveway.
And I also think you should consider reaching out to Mr. Ferry, do you know him?
Yeah, I do.
He knows about this one?
We've talked, we've talked.
Okay.
Do you have documentation of the stones?
Um, I, I probably have pictures, because we used to, where he, before he bought the property, we were the stewards of it for 22 years because it belonged to my aunt.
Yep.
So we had sheep there and pastured them out there, so I have, I have pictures, I just have to find them.
Okay, sounds very good.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're all set. We know, we know what we're heading towards.
You've got a mess, that's all I can tell you.
Okay.
There was a, there was a huge, I mean, when I say huge, it was this big and probably, oh, 14, 15 feet long, piles of rocks that were out back. He removed a whole pile of rocks. And went, and went down below the ground, so now there's a vernal pool there and that's on my property.
And the stones are in somebody's yard?
No, the stones are underneath the road. He pulled, he pulled stones from both sides.
All right, well, unless we know what we're up against. Okay, is there, I just wanna say one thing before...
Mr. Hall has got some more comments.
Okay, Lenny.
Nice meeting you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buffett, you'll be well soon.
One is a potential, a request for a possible policy change by conservation. You currently have an associate member?
I'm gonna deal with that next. That's what I'm gonna head to next about becoming a voting member.
Right, especially when, like, when one of you have to recuse yourself, you have four, you could have a tie. Secondly, if somebody's sick.
Yeah.
The other issue, something to think about. And it has to do with, one, expediting the meeting, two, maybe decreasing the emotion on the issue of fines. And I was wondering if you would consider, that's the discuss, and contemplate whether it would be wise to form a fine mediation subcommittee of two members and Lisa to meet. And two members, you don't have to have a quorum as a result. You don't have to meet here in the public and work out your differences. If you can resolve them, beautiful. And you just come before the full board and take a vote based on a letter, correspondence from the subcommittee to the committee. If you can't resolve it, then you have a full-blown hearing. But it also saves the embarrassment and possibly the legal expense of the person coming before you.
I actually did a little bit of research over the weekend and I learned some things that you might find interesting, actually, in this regard. I think it's a very interesting idea and it reads, I saw, forgive me in advance if I misquote the, the chapter and section, but I was doing some research over the weekend into the open meeting law and I believe that it is under chapter 30A, section 8. They list the exemptions for, or the allowances for executive session by a committee. And actually, private mediation with a, with a resident or with an individual involving something that is, that is deeply personal is actually one of the, there's actually a specific exemption under executive session for like a private, personal mediation. Based on my initial reading, seems like it would actually be an appropriate setting for that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So say if someone made a mistake, instead of bringing them up in front of everybody, having a more private deliberation?
Right, right, or if someone had...
Public discriminate, public shaving is never...
Right, right, exactly. If there was something that was of a deeply sensitive, personal nature, you know, whether it's a disability or a personal hardship, they might not be comfortable discussing in an open session. The executive session rules do allow for that in limited circumstances for private mediation.
Now, for a year, this guy's been getting letters saying that we have the right to find him to, to give us some kind of action and never, never, never had he done anything. I think certainly that is sufficient info, but that's something we could bring up. I don't want him to start it tonight.
Oh, sure, sure.
That was my intent, was just to bring it up.
Oh, yeah, just as a concept.
No, no, one other, okay.
Generally.
Bob, I'm gonna finish off what Lenny had started. After you are appointed by the selectmen, you know, you're welcome to sit up here with us and you'll be a non-voting member. However, if someone does step down due to recusing themselves, the other members can vote. And I'm gonna recommend that, that all of a sudden we say that we permit Bob to be a replacement and vote for that next item if necessary. So that would get you, you know, coming here all the time and voting when someone, like, now I stepped down tonight, that issue has been settled. You stepped down tonight, I don't know, I don't remember if it's been settled. You stepped down, I don't know if you even had to.
Right, exactly. National group puts a poll in, we all gotta leave, right?
Okay.
You guys decide a restatement, you're not any problem.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Before you say all that, can I wait for two months, I would like to work with you guys and learn, I don't know anything. So my vote or even my thought is useless, it's...
Not necessarily, but you can still...
No, we're just, we're gonna get you appointed anyway by the selectmen, so...
Yeah, that's gonna start...
I just don't wanna wreck someone's project because I'm not like...
They're not gonna listen to you.
No, you're not gonna wreck the project.
Okay.
Well, okay, all right, a motion was made and seconded to adjourn.
I just have a quick question, do I need to draft a letter to the Board of Selectmen because you guys...
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, here. All right, that's all, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.